Good evening, Village of Tocco. Welcome to the Zoning Board of Appeals, the public meeting for Wednesday, January 8th, 2020. Happy New Year to everyone. Let's stand up and say the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We have a busy agenda today, so we'll try and keep it moving along as quickly as possible. We'll start with the approval of the minutes for December 11th, 2019. Nancy has written them up and passed them out. Do any members have any comments?
Nope, I don't.
Do I have a motion?
I make a motion to accept the minute.
Second.
And second. Call the roll, please.
Member Garrity.
In favor?
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Palladino.
In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
In favor. Okay, so the minutes are approved for our last meeting, December 11th, 2019. And so we are going to start with item number, which is number six on the agenda, but we're going to start with 1416 Columbus Avenue, which is seeking a special permit used for a new fitness studio. Is the applicant here?
Yes. Good evening, Chair members of the board. Happy New Year.
Happy New Year as well, to you as well. Could you discuss your application and tell us if anything has changed since last time?
Sure. Nothing has changed, no additions. This is a personal training facility, health and sports club located at 1416 Columbus Avenue. We went through it in detail previously. This location will be in operation from 7:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. on a daily basis. Two nights a week from 8:00 to 9:00 p.m., or I'm sorry, 7:00 to 8:00 p.m. they will have group classes. Same thing on Saturday and Sunday mornings from 7:00 to 9:00 a.m. The basis or premise of this business is one-on-one training. So at no point will there be, except for the group classes, more than three or four people in the facility.
Great. And what, before this facility, what was, what was the location before this facility?
This was Pinot's Palladium, and previous to that, it was Curves.
Which was another fitness studio.
Correct.
That's right. Okay, any questions from the, from the members?
No questions.
Thank you very much. We will, the public hearing was open, so I would ask any members of the public, if they have any comments on this applicant from 1416 Columbus Avenue to open a new fitness studio, please come to the front. Seeing no members of the public, I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The public hearing is closed, and I think we are ready to vote on this. We've discussed it in our work sessions.
I've got a motion on this. The application for a special permit requested by Michelle Demasi, whose address is 14-16 Columbus Avenue, Tocco, New York, Section 33, Block 8, Lot 1, for relief from the following section of the zoning code, 6-1 special permit. Applicant Michelle Demasi seeks a special permit from the sport to open a fitness center at 14-16 Columbus Avenue, Tocco. Applicant has represented that the business to be operated from said location is not a typical gym, but is a one-on-one training center where a trainer will train one client at a time. The applicant does propose several small group classes during the evening and possibly on the weekend, where there is ample parking in the area. The location at 14-16 Columbus Avenue is a pre-existing building that should be noted that prior to the last tenant, there was a fitness studio operated out of this space. In applying Section 6.1 of the zoning code of this, to this application, this board finds that the applicant has met the standards for a special permit, and thus, this application is approved. It is determined that the use proposed by this applicant is compatible with the district, the location and size of the use, the nature and intensity of the operations involved in or conducted in connection with such use, the size of the site in relation to the use, the assembly of persons in connection with the use, and the location of the site with respect to streets gives access to the site are such that the use will be in harmony with the appropriate orderly development of the district in which the use is proposed to be located. It is further determined that the use proposed is compatible with the comprehensive plan. Since there is a pre-existing building, it is determined that all proposed structures, equipment, or material will be readily accessible for fire and police protection, and that the location, nature, and height of buildings, the location, nature, and height of walls, and fences, and the nature and extent of landscaping on the site shall not hinder or discourage the appropriate development and use of adjacent land and buildings. Since the business will not be run as a traditional gym, it is determined that the operations in connection with the use will not be offensive, dangerous, or destructive of basic environmental characteristics, or detrimental to the public interest of the village, and not be more objectionable to nearby properties by reason of noise, fumes, vibration, flashing, or glaring from lights, and similar nuisance conditions that would be the operation of any permitted use not requiring a special permit. The board has determined that the neighborhood character and surrounding property values are reasonably safeguarded, and that the use will not cause undue traffic congestion or create traffic hazard. The planning board has recommended this project to this board, and the recommendation includes that based on the usage, that there should be no parking requirement implemented. We agree and find that the use will have little to no impact on the surrounding parking. Therefore, there shall be no parking requirement implemented by this board. Based on the foregoing, this board adopts a negative declaration pursuant to SECRE.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Garrity.
In favor?
Member Fiori.
In favor.
Member Palladino. In favor.
Member Jackman.
In favor.
In favor. Congratulations. Thank you very much. We'll now call to the podium, 22 Warren Avenue. In addition to the rear of the property, is the applicant here?
Yes, I'm here.
Welcome back.
Thank you.
You're doing great. Could you give an overview of your project?
Sure. It's a small extension to the back of our house, roughly three foot six, going about 15 foot wide, still maintaining the same footprint of the existing property. Nothing major, just really, the intent was to expand our kitchen a little bit and expand our bathroom upstairs.
That's great. And how long have you lived in Tocco?
We've been here for about 20 years now.
Great, congratulations.
Thank you.
And have there been any changes to the, to the plan since last month when you proposed them?
No.
Great. Thank you very much. Any questions from the members?
No, I don't think we expressed any concerns at the time, so.
All right, you can take a seat. Thank you. The public meeting comment period was left open. Are there's any members of the public who would like to comment on 22 Warren? If you would please come to the podium. Seeing no members of the public, I will make a motion to close 22, the public comment period for 22 Warren. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
The, the public comment period is now closed. Mr. Palladino, do you have a?
I have a motion. Thank you. I have a motion in form of a resolution. This application for area variance requested by Nancy Deanna and Craig Deanna, whose address is 22 Warren Avenue, Tocco, New York, Section 47, Block 2, Lot 46, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code, 4-2 dot 4 dot 2, side yard, and 5-1 dot 6 dot 3, increasing a non-conformity. SECRE resolution. Based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, excuse me, this action, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations. Two, this zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application. Three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Nancy, please pull the board.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Applicant resides at 22 Warren Avenue, Tocco. Applicants are seeking to put an addition into their non-conforming house. This, the addition will square off the house so as not to encroach any further into the side yard as the existing house already does. The addition will encroach 6.1 feet into the mandated nine-foot setback. As the existing house already encroaches on the side yard, the addition will have little to no impact on neighboring properties. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variance to be granted, as the benefit of the applicant of the area variance outweighs the detriment to health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submission and presentation that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board. Further, the granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variance be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which such variances shall become null and void.
Is there a second?
Second.
Member Garrity.
In favor?
Member Fiori.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. Congratulations.
Good luck.
Thank you very much. Good luck.
Good luck.
For another 20 years in Tocco. Go for it. I would like to call the applicant for 122 Bella Vista Street to the podium, please.
My name is Oscar Wajie, and we are applying here to convert an existing garage into a photo studio for the owner of the house. We were here for the November's meeting, where we presented a project that looks more like an attic second floor added to the, to the garage, and we have some changes to do based on your recommendations. So we basically lowered the, the roof of the garage about two feet, four inches, so, and removed all the dormers, so it is actually a one-story garage, like original. On the back, against the two neighbors, we sloped the roof, so none of the neighbors have a big wall against their properties. And to compensate the area that we were proposing on top of the first floor, we added four feet to the left side of the garage compared to the former proposal, and we also added three feet at the front of the, of the garage. So basically, that's, those are the changes that we did to the project.
Great. And what's the use of this going to be for?
It's going to be a photo studio for the owner of the property. Right now, she's working in the basement, where the conditions are not the best for her, for what she's doing. She needs a taller ceiling. Right now, we are proposing ten feet, and, and she needs some special conditions of light, which we are trying to accomplish here with this project.
Great. Do you have a, a property layout view?
Yes.
That you could show us and walk us through?
So, this is the Bella Vista Street. This is the existing house. The garage is here on the back. So what we are proposing is an addition to the left of the garage and to the front, the way it shows it here highlighted.
Great. So the garage is existing, and your only addition is to further into their own yard.
Yes.
Is that correct?
Yeah.
Gotcha.
The other, the other rooms that you're proposing, okay, it's just a powder room, not a ba, not a, nothing more, nothing less?
No. What we are proposing is not more than that. We have a small powder room here, the storage to keep all the gardening, gardening stuff, and we have an office on the back of that.
I just want to clarify for the public, because I mean, I've watched the last meeting. You know, in summary, you came in with a essentially two-story garage that we were concerned was going to kind of loom over your neighbor's property to the south, I believe, of the proper, right of the property. And this is specifically what we thought was going to work better in your space, and I mean, you've done everything we asked, and I think it looks absolutely fantastic. One important clarity is that this is still a garage, per se, in that the opening for the space can still fit a car, correct?
Yeah. We are basically keeping the existing opening for the garage in width and height, so if in the future, somebody wants to.
So the garage is not closed off?
Yes.
Essentially?
Yep.
Okay. And there's plenty of parking on this, on the driveway for the residents' cars?
Yeah. If you look at the side plan, here you can fit here three cars easily without any.
So we're not creating any street parking issues?
Yeah, no.
Okay.
I got one for, when clients come in, they're going to park in the driveway, too?
Clients?
With clients, yeah.
They are going to park in the driveway as well. I'm sorry. There is a space in the driveway, but I want more clarification from the owner.
Yeah, when clients come, they'll park in the driveway. We only have one car and clients, I usually, I can only handle one client at a time.
At a time.
It's one family, one car.
Okay.
Yeah, could you describe the nature of your photo studio and your business?
Sorry, your name, your name and it's.
Sure. Sorry. My name is Caitlin Larrabee. I'm the owner, applicant, and photographer. My business is photographing newborns mostly, families with young children, and maternity, so pregnant people. So that's part of the reason I need this, is because newborns have very specific, and young children have very specific needs. Part of the need for the powder room is when you have toddlers, they need to go to the bathroom.
Yep. I think it looks great. You guys did a great job.
Thank you. You can sit down now. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
The public comment period was started at the last meeting and was left open, so at this point, if there's anyone from the public that would like to comment on 122 Bella Vista Street and the conversion of the garage to a photo studio, please come up. Seeing no comments from the public, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Do we have a motion in the form of a resolution?
Chairman, I have a motion in the form of a resolution. This is an area variance resolution. The application for area variance is requested by Henry Krouchenko, whose address is 122 Bella Vista Street, Tocco, New York, Section 40, Section 42, Block 6, Lot 6, for relief from the following sections of the zoning code, 4-1 dot 1 dot 4, accessory uses, 4-2 dot 4 dot 3, rear yard, and 4-2 dot 7, off-street parking. SECRE resolution, based on this application as submitted, this zoning board of appeals finds and determines that, one, the action taken herein is an unlisted action subject to the requirements of SECRE and its implementing regulations; two, the zoning board of appeals is in possession of all information reasonably necessary to make the determination as to the environmental significance of the proposed area variance application; three, that the action taken herein shall not have a significant adverse impact on the environment, and it is declared that a negative declaration is hereby adopted with regard to this action.
Is there a second?
Second.
Nancy?
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
Applicant resides at 122 Bella Vista Street in Tocco. At said premises, there exists a non-conforming garage. Applicant is seeking to expand the garage and use the garage for storage and for a photo studio. The proposed garage would include a bathroom for clients. To achieve the desired use, the applicant needs various variances that were outlined above. It should be noted that the proposed application is scaled down from the initial application, and we believe the proposed design is much more in conformity with the existing neighborhood. Therefore, recommendation is for the area variances to be granted as to the benefit, as the benefit to the applicant of the area variances outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood. The applicant has demonstrated through its submissions and presentations that it has met all aspects of the five-prong test to the satisfaction of this board. Actually, Gary, can I ask you a question? Sorry, real quick. Don't worry. It's just a language thing. So I'm just trying to understand here, you say anytime the garage structure is used, is that a permit? Is that a legal term? Is that a technical term?
Living area, I guess would be good, too. Living area.
All right. And then here, it will not be able to obtain resident permit parking for the, for the permits? Living area resident?
Yeah.
Okay. Instead of that, okay. Thank you. Sorry about that. It is determined by the, if it is, if, ooh. If it is determined, I'm going to add an is in there, determined by the building department that at any time the garage structure is used as a living area, or it is determined that the use is not consistent with the application or this approval, then the various variances shall be immediately revoked. Lastly, the applicant will not be able to obtain resident parking permits. Further, the granting of the variances herein is granted on the condition that work under such variances be commenced and diligently prosecuted within one year of the granting thereof, failing which such variances shall become null and void.
Do I have a second?
Second.
Member Garrity.
In favor?
In favor.
In favor.
In favor.
In favor. In favor. In favor. Congratulations. Good luck with your business. And at this time, I'd like to bring 145 Main Street to the podium to discuss the dog training and boarding center.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board.
Thank you.
Leonard Grandis, representing Instinct Dog and Behavior Center. We are here for a special use permit for dog behavior and certain boarding facilities that will be for the dogs that are in training, and some occasional dogs for occasional tra, uh, boarding. We've been before the planning board. The planning board has been asking us to get, has reduced our parking to four spaces, and we were able to finally get the four spaces, so they were very clear, and they're waiting now for your decisions on whether or not we can proceed. They're ready to go with it.
And to clarify, these four spaces are in close proximity to the business?
Yes, they're within five minutes walking distance to the spa, to the business itself.
Thank you.
And we have a lease, we already have a signed lease for that, and have already had payment towards that as well.
Okay.
And we're up for questions.
That's great. Perhaps the applicant can come to the podium and describe her business again. So you are a dog training facility?
That's right.
That, that's what I understand. And you were explaining your most popular camp is, maybe you could discuss that a little bit?
So the biggest portion of our business is dog boarding and training. So the dogs come and they spend two to three weeks of it with us. That's the most popular length of stay. And in that time, they stay inside of our facility, they work with our trainers in our facility, they are well cared for, and they become better canine citizens. After that, we call them alumni.
And to clarify, the vast majority of your residents are not kind of day residents. They are there for a long-term period, the vast majority of your.
That's correct.
Participants, okay. So it's not a every-day in and out of the property sort of situation?
That's correct.
Okay.
So what are your, besides the two to three-week camp, do you, I assume you have one-week camps, four-week camp, what's sort of?
We are able to, depending on what the families want for their dogs, the length of their vacations, we, we can work with them. We also do puppy raising for tiny little puppies, and we house-train them, so that takes a few weeks also.
That takes a few weeks as well. Gotcha. And you, so there's approximately, I believe, room for 60 dogs within this facility, is that correct?
That's correct.
How many cages are there? Sixty cages?
Yes.
Gotcha. And how do you, you know, one concern on Main Street and throughout Tocco is, of course, traffic, and so how do you manage sort of drop-off and pickup for, for your daycare, your doggy daycare, or your doggy training center?
Right. It's interesting. So we, we do have a program called Day School, and we have set aside 10 slots, two days a week, for those dogs. Dogs who do Day School only come two days a week, and they're dropped off in the morning and picked up in the evening. So I know that sounds like a lot of traffic, but we do assigned pickups. We use a program called Calendly, and we allot 10 minutes per pickup and drop-off, and we don't double-book those, if that makes sense. So there's only one scheduled pickup or drop-off at any given time.
So theoretically, if the, if the parents or the dog owners follow Calendly, there would only be one every 10 minutes or six per hour?
That's correct. But we have two regular parking spots in front of our building, so like, if they overlap, plus a handicap parking spot, so if they do overlap a little.
But you wouldn't be booking two per 10 minutes. You'd only still book one per 10 minutes.
Exactly.
So the likelihood is you'll have one extra spot almost all the time, one empty spot most of the time.
Well, the handicap spot will probably be open most of the time, and we will also have an additional spot that, for transitions.
And I think you explained it in the working session. You said the reason for that is not only for traffic flow, but it's so that the dogs don't interact with each other, and so that there's a smooth entry and exit.
That's right. We want the dogs to be really happy and calm when they come to our facility, and when they leave, too.
Gotcha. So one of the biggest concerns with, that we're getting from the public comments is, of course, dogs outside the facility. And so can you explain if, and when, and how dogs would ever be outside of your facility, besides, of course, just pickup and drop-off?
Yes, we would like to reserve the right to take dogs out of the facility to work on certain behaviors, good canine citizen behaviors, polite walking on a leash. We would only ever have one dog with one handler. We do not do group walks. We would never have one handler handling two dogs or three, there's one, one handler to one dog.
Gotcha. And you regularly take dogs on exercise walks? Is that like?
When they're at our facility, we, we provide a lot of enrichments for the dogs, but outside walks is not a part of that regular enrichment for dogs. That's only for trainers. Only certified trainers may take the dog outside.
So to clarify, the busiest, your facility could be outside its walls, would be three trainers with three dogs.
Exactly.
Correct? And each trainer would be limited to one dog, and that trainer's attention is solely focused on that dog.
Exactly.
And from last meeting, I'm, I'm sorry if you may have just said this, my alarm went off there, each dog is double-leashed to the trainer for safety purposes, correct?
That is our policy.
Okay. Thank you.
Any additional questions?
Yeah. As far as your boarding facilities and everything, your cages and everything for boarding is mainly located in the basement. I'm thinking about the, how should I say, surrounding area of the neighbors and everything else like that there, so it's, how should I, would be less of an impact on the neighborhood and everything. They're, they're sort of sequestered in there.
That's true. The area that could possibly get the noisiest is the boarding area, where all of the mason kennels are kept, though the dogs will never be unattended. There will always be a staff person there with them, so should never be chaos without a human to help fix the situation. That's located in the basement, which does have windows, but they don't face a residential area. The, the second and third floors, which come up to meet where the residential area is up on High Street, are used during the daytime for training situations only, and, and also some dog exercise.
And I know you said basement, just to make it explicitly clear, the majority of the dogs will be underground essentially, so any barking issues, et cetera, would be?
I don't think you're going to hear them.
No.
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
I just want to make sure you got a park next to them, make sure no dogs are allowed in the park.
No dogs.
No, make sure.
Well, dogs are not allowed in the parks.
And you were, okay.
We would never do that.
Okay.
Thank you very much. You can have your seat.
Mr. Chair, if I may, I know that there's comments by the public about vicious dogs, and I just want to address the, our code with how we handle vicious dogs, and the applicant comment on. So bottom line, 5-29 of our code basically says, "No owner or other person may possess, harbor, or have care or custody of a vicious dog, nor shall the training of such dogs be permitted in any building or premises in any residential zone in the Village of Tocco." So that basically means they can't have vicious dogs on this premises, okay? That's, that's our code. So if a dog has bitten in the past, I'll go through what a vicious dog is, that dog's not allowed to be here. So our code defines a vicious dog, basically says, "Any dog with a known propensity, tendency, or disposition to attack unprovoked, to cause injury to, to, or otherwise threaten the safety of human beings or domestic animals. Any dog which because of its size, physical nature, or vicious propensity is capable of inflicting serious harm or death to humans, and which would constitute a danger to human life or property if it were not kept in the manner required by this article. Any dog which without provocation attacks or bites, or has attacked or bitten a human being or, or a domestic animal." Then they, they talk about dog fighting and attack dogs and that, I know that's not this case here, but we have safeguards in our code, basically. And I think the applicant can address that, 'cause I have spoken to her about our code and how she complies with that.
We don't accept dogs with a bite history, especially on other animals or damaging human beings, that would be a liability for us, because we keep a lot of dogs, so we need to keep them all safe. We work with people who have dogs like that only in their own home, so we will send a trainer to their house, but those dogs may not come and do board and train with us in our facility.
For the sake of the argument, Gary, but who determines that? Who's to know that there's a vicious dog in the facility?
It gets a little complicated, but a vicious dog normally is a dog that's been determined by a court to be vicious, there's an agricultural markets law of the, but our, it's a little broader than that, our, our code, so if there's a bite history of a dog, and we know that dog's now there at this facility, that's a violation of our code.
Okay.
It's enforced.
Seems somewhat unenforceable, but yes.
Well, how about, how about a different question, do you, will you take any breed of dog? Obviously, you hear a lot about pit bulls, or rottweilers, or that type of stuff.
We don't.
How do you determine dogs, breeds, that you would accept?
So, every dog is an individual, and we don't discriminate by breed, because there have been some very beautiful golden retrievers who have bitten people very badly, so even though like, they're beautiful and seem nice, and everyone loves a golden, but they, they might not be a good fit for our facility if they bite. We take a history online, there's a call center that screens all these calls before, they try to get a handle on what the owner needs, what they're looking for, what area they're in, there's an extensive amount of information is required before they come in. Only dogs that are deemed to be safe for our staff and our fellow, you know, the other dogs in the facility would come in for a meet and greet, or a consult.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any further questions?
No.
Thank you very much. At the last public meeting, or at the last zoning board of appeals meeting, we left open the public hearing, are there any comments from the public regarding 145 Main Street for the dog training and boarding center? If so, please come to the podium.
Good evening, gentlemen.
Could you please state your name, please, and your, where you live? Thank you.
Sarah Mangum, twenty-one South High Street.
Thank you.
Just to say something about vicious dogs, any homeowners, you cannot, your homeowner's insurance will not cover your rotis, will not cover your mastiffs, will not cover your pit bulls, because they are deemed vicious dogs. And I just want to say, I've been, I've been here in Tocco for about forty years, and just to share a little information, we had a neighbor at one time that owned a deaf pit bull. This dog allegedly went to training because it was deaf. My husband and I one day were sitting on the porch with the grandkids, and what happens? The dog comes tearing across the street, jumped my front wall, and for that reason, we had a gate up, thank goodness, otherwise myself, my husband, or my kids, grandkids, could have been mauled. I don't blame the dog, I blame the owners. We're all human, and mistakes are made. It would be a tragedy for someone, trainer or owner, to make a mistake, and one of our children getting off a school bus, running to the playground, or a senior using West Cop services, gets bitten, or frightened enough because of the dog barking, because someone just came, and they run into the street. One forty-five Main Street is located in a congested and populated area, in case some people have not noticed. We find people walking their dogs on Main Street, and live outside the immediate area, most of them clean up after their pets, some do not. It is my understanding the proposed facility will be ventilated. Our air quality is already compromised, as Main Street is a county road and utilized by ginormous trucks twenty-four seven. We, as residents on this side of the village, are being squeezed out of quality living space, and surrounded by businesses, and now a proposed dog training facility. The presenter for DTF mentioned PTI in their presentation before the last, at the last meeting. PTI was a quiet neighbor, no barking dogs, and they provided ample parking for their employees, or rented additional spaces. I have a question, the young lady indicated, no, the gentleman indicated that there was a lease, according to the meeting, I thought they were supposed to have the lease in hand, and I'd like to know if it's signed on both sides, 'cause anybody can say, "Oh yeah, I got a lease."
Well, it would be a condition of, of their approval, that they would have to have those, it would be submitted to.
And, let me see, and also, I want to say, this proposed facility will not be utilized by Tocco residents, but by people outside of a local community that have no stake in our neighborhood, or no peg in the board. May suggest the DTF take their barking dog facility to a commercial location, and not a, into a residential, high-traffic neighborhood, or better yet, there's vacant space behind the post office, there's vacant space down on Marble Dell Road, that's available for lease, they would fit in, in those neighborhoods, I think, nicely. And also, I believe the Epstein space will also be vacant soon. I hereby request that the village, zoning board, village board, and mayor rethink the special use proposal. Oh, also, may I ask a question? There was supposed to be fencing, what type of fencing is going up? Is this chain link fencing, wood fencing, vinyl fencing?
I believe it's existing fencing on the property, correct?
Well, the existing fencing, you could, it's, it's a lovely black fence, but any dog being trained could see kids running by, and dogs are startled by running kids, and vice versa.
I believe there's gonna be an additional fence inside the fence for an area where the dogs can walk.
What, what type of fence?
Inside.
It would be a ten-foot high.
I believe it's a solid wood fence.
Solid wood fence, looks like. We can ask the architect to clarify.
Eight or ten, somebody just said ten, now it's eight?
We'll, we'll let the architect come up, after your comment, after you're finished talking, he can come up and address those questions, thank you.
Well, anyway, thank you for allowing me to vent, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mang, appreciate it. If the architect could come up and maybe answer two questions, and then we'll open it to the next public.
Thank you.
So there was a question about parking spaces, and there's a question about ventilation, and there was a question about fencing, perhaps you could address all three of those, please?
The lease I just handed out to you, that is signed and already paid for, so that has been signed by both parties and taken care, so we do have those four parking spaces, so that's, has been taken care of.
And what's the address of the parking?
Eighty-seven Main Street.
And this is 145 Main Street, so it's just down the road?
Blocks down the road.
Okay.
That's the first step, second thing in terms of ventilation, the ventilation is actually purified air that'd be going, we would need to circulate air, and those will be going out, those will be in the kennel area, down in the basement area, and there's exhaust windows, the wind, small windows that go out the back, out the side of the building, towards the park area, but there's no fumes or anything like that, this is not a.
Are you having to do additional ventilation work in the facility?
Air conditioning is already throughout the whole space, we're not adding any air conditioning work, but we are adding pure, air purifiers in the areas where the dogs will be kept, 'cause we don't want, well, for our own health also, so we are purifying, we have systems that recirculate the air, and also bring in fresh air.
Great, thank you.
Okay, and I think there's.
And then the fence around the, you have.
The existing fences, the continuation of the wood fencing that goes across where they have the loading dock, so it's all the way set back at the end of the parking lot, and that is where the dogs will be on the inside of that fence, there's no, there's no dogs gonna be training on the outside of that fence, in that area, out in the open area where the parking lot is.
Do you have your site plan with you by any chance? If you could put it up on the board, that would be great, and show us where the fencing is, and where the dogs would exercise outside, that would be appreciated.
Site plan probably shows it best, let me get these. Yep, please. Saying, the site plan shows it best, the area that we're talking about is this area all the way at the back of the parking lot, it already exists, the wall over here exists, it's already full height over there, and we're just extending that full height wall across there, it's a solid wood fence, so, you know, the dogs are not gonna be seeing the people out there, or, I think, I don't think they're even gonna hear them from this area, it's gonna be closed in, and, you know, over there, so it's not facing the people at all, it's not, and, once again, the dogs are gonna be in the basement area, which at that point is at the back of the building. And as you can see, this is a two-story building, plus a full story below, but in the residential area, there's only one story, the top story is the only part that's exposed at that point, so we're talking about two floors under the residential area where these dogs are gonna be kept.
And just to clarify with the fence, as that was a specific concern, it looks like it's a ten-foot fence, is that correct?
Yes, it's a ten-foot fence to match the other fence.
Right, so it's a ten, a ten-foot wooden fence, solid?
Yes.
That the dogs are gonna have their play area behind, and no dogs will be playing outside that fenced-in area?
No, that is not, that's the parking lot, we're not taking dogs into a parking lot.
Okay.
Just to note with regard to ventilation, there is no exhaust of any fumes or anything outside for public.
No, no.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there other members of the public who would like to comment? There's one coming up from the back, come on up, please, thank you.
Hi.
Please state your name and address.
My name is Jenny Steinhegan, I live on South High Street, I share a property line with 145 Main Street. I've seen the zoning board meeting of December nineteenth, I've seen the planning board meeting of November nineteenth, and I think that no matter how you look at this project, it's not gonna work. It doesn't fit, it doesn't make any sense for there to be a training facility for dogs with behavioral issues, potentially vicious dogs, potentially dangerous dogs, dogs that the owner at a previous meeting stated could have a bite history with stipulations. Next to a home, showing a property line with a residence, a house, a property line with a playground, a basketball court, and a tennis court, across the street from condo building, across the street from a huge apartment building, adjacent to a pedestrian walkway, and a community center that hosts after-school classes, I can't think of a worse place to bring a bunch of dogs with behavioral issues. I think it's the perfect storm if you add a day where all the cars are coming in, and the kids are walking by. But let me enumerate my concerns, if I can, into a number of different categories, parking, zoning, legality, safety, and environment. I'll start with parking, if I look familiar to you at all, it's because last year, I came before the board with concerns about parking issues with the arrival of the Orange Theory Gym on Main Street. And thanks to your help, I was told that there would be ten allocated parking spots for Orange Theory members, and that they would be using the metered spots on Main Street. I live right there, on South High Street, on any given day, on every single day, seven days a week, there are people from Orange Theory Gym parking on South High Street. The blue BMW likes the nine AM, the red Miata likes the ten, I can tell you what time it is based on the number of car doors slamming. We've got congestion on South High Street, and PTI vacated months ago, there's nobody in there now. So, as you know, and I think that, I appreciate you understanding our parking concerns on South High Street. At the zoning board meeting, the applicant stated that they would have six employees. At the zoning, at the planning board meeting, they stated that there would be eight employees, because now you've got these behavioral veterinarians. So now they've got these four spots, three blocks away, and we've got eight employees, so I'm wondering where these other four are gonna park, are they gonna take up spots on South High Street? They're not even gonna find them, let alone do we want them there, but where are these other four people gonna park? At the last meeting, I think it was the planning board meeting, the applicant stated that they would be having classes on nights and weekends, these could be canine alumni classes, these could be community classes, these could be owner classes. These classes could have up to ten to twenty people, now we've got gym people, we've got E-CAP meetings, we've got ten to twenty, let's say fifteen, additional people coming in, the applicant said, maybe they'll take the train, maybe. Even if five of them take the train, we've got ten people now, parking for a class. These classes, she said, could be four to six weeks, depending, different times, different programs. Wow, it's a lot of people parking. She said that there would be potentially twenty-six incidents of pickup and drop off, that four dogs could be coming in at a time, that's a lot. And I'm sure you've seen the parking lot of 145 Main Street, it's not the friendliest parking lot. I mean, you've got cars here on the side now, you've got people coming for the first time, coming off a busy Main Street, how they, are they reversing onto Main Street when they're leaving? Or that, we have a car coming in and a car coming out at the same time, twenty-six incidents a day, they said, potentially. And the thing that really kinda threw me was, at the previous meeting, the number of kennels, they said, sixty-eight kennels, not six-two-eight, sixty-eight as in round up to seventy. Now, at no point does anyone think they're, well, I don't know, maybe there'll be sixty-eight dogs, maybe not at once, but there's sixty potential dog owners. Okay, they're coming for a week-long class, but hey, when a hotel looks at occupancy, they look at occupancy, we're talking about sixty-eight dogs, potentially with occupancy. I mentioned the parking on South High Street, just today, we're trying to drop my son off at preschool, I, my husband had to pull out, reverse back in, because we had cars on both sides of the driveway and across the street. We can't, on many days, reverse park into our driveway, which is how we normally park, because you can't cut it on the angle. That's parking. I really think we should answer that, where those other four employees would be, and where these people coming to, these classes are gonna park. Zoning, you talked about five-twenty-nine, about a vicious dog, no vicious dogs. Vicious dogs are prohibited in a residential zone, I live on a residential street, that has an entrance to 145 Main Street. If a dog is thought to be vicious, but maybe they don't put it down on paper, that dog comes onto my street, have they violated the zoning? Is, do I call the cops if I see any dog coming up my street, because I don't know if they're vicious? A vicious dog, according to the ordinance, is supposed to be labeled, there's supposed to be signs indicating when and if there's a possible vicious dog. I don't want to see a dog coming up my street and think that they're vicious, I don't want to have to call the cops, because I don't know if they're vicious. Vicious dogs are not allowed in a residential area, South High Street is a residential street. So I think we need to adjust the zoning thing again. How about the legality of sixty-eight dogs? I mean, I've grown up around dogs, I've been to a number of shelters and training facilities, have you ever seen sixty-eight? I don't know, is it legal? Is it locally, state, nationally legal to have sixty-eight dogs in one facility, in a basement, two basements? Is it okay with the ASPCA? I'm sure they take care of good dogs, they take good care of their dogs, I'm sure it's a great training facility, in general, but not for a residential area. Has the fire department been notified? What if there's a fire? What if there's a fire, and they need to know that sixty-eight dogs are potentially there, do they let them burn, or do they take out sixty-eight dogs? Again, with the occupancy issues of sixty-eight potential dogs. Okay, safety. The applicant, applicant has stated that they're not going to let the dogs run in the park, but nobody's asked, and they've never offered, where are they gonna walk these dogs? Are they gonna walk them up South High Street on the dead end? Are they gonna take them out on Main Street for a stroll? Are they gonna go down Marble Dell Road, where we run out a sidewalk, and now we've got a dog on the street in front of a hotel? They do take dogs with bite history with stipulations, I heard the applicant say that they don't, but at another meeting, they said that they do, so we've got dogs with behavioral issues, do they bite, do they scratch, do they growl, do they need a muzzle, there are all kinds of questions. And environmental concerns, so Leonard Brandis was saying that the air would be exhausted from the windows on the basement level on the east side of the building. I, I, somebody asked about exhaust, and I think somebody said no to exhaust, but at the meeting on the nineteenth of November to the planning board, they did say that this exhaust would be ventilated out. Whether it's facing the park, or it's facing me, or it's facing the street, it's, it's out there, and there's wind blowing, and now we've got, as my neighbor mentioned, some serious air quality concerns, and we've got the noise concerns. So, we've got parking, zoning, legality, safety, and environmental issues, what's the most important? I, they're all important. I mean, how are, how are we going to allow this, and look back when, you know, we've got kids walking down on, maybe not in the heart of winter, but three other seasons of the year, the kids coming down from the daycare next to the police station, they go down to that playground. So you've got fifteen kids walking down, you've got me pushing a double stroll, you've got twenty-six potential incidents of cars coming. So, you've got 15 kids walking down, you've got me pushing a double stroll, you've got 26 potential incidents of cars coming in and out of a parking lot, I'm sorry, driveway parking lot that you can barely turn around in because you've got it shoved with parking of employees and, and people. So, I ask you to please, if you could weigh in all of those factors and help us find a better spot for this dog training facility. I know we need to fill up 145 Main Street, but please not with a behavioral dog training facility. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Are there any other members of the public that would like to speak? If you would come, please? Please state your name and address.
My name is Margarita Clement, 65 Circuit Avenue. I've lived here 26 years. I work up at Ferris Avenue occasionally at a modeling agency and right next door is one of these schools. And the potential dogs that do come are beautiful, they're wonderful. I love dogs, but they do have discipline problems. And you don't know a dog is going to bite until they do. Now, when I sit there and I model sometimes for hours, I just sit in a chair, they bark constantly. And whether they're in a basement or not, a lot of dogs are going to be hurt. And when the people are bringing them in, some of them are bringing them on one leash. And oftentimes, when I'm going up to the model agency, one of the wonderful dogs and their lovely owners accidentally drops the leash. I think because it's near the playground, it's across the street from the daycare center at the CAP. And I think it's, and I feel sorry for the people that live on South High, but I think the most important issue, I mean, they're all important issues, other children. And I think that's a very bad place to put that because I've been modeling for years next to one of these schools and I know what it's like. It sounds beautiful on paper, but in reality, it's not so beautiful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Hi, good evening. My name is Odine Mangum. I've been a resident of Tocco for 73 years. I just want to echo everything that my neighbors have said and my wife, of course. First of all, I want to echo all of those concerns. Health and safety of children and commuters, okay? Noise, noise abatement. I'm curious to know exactly what type of noise abatement that the proposed business had put in place to relieve us, relieve us of that issue. I'm concerned also about property values, how it adversely affects property values or will affect property values. I wonder if they've explored alternate sites for this facility. I'm very concerned with that. Of course, I'm concerned with the after-school programs, daycare centers and summer recreational programs that is occurring at park on a regular basis. They talked about ventilation. And the ventilation on that side of the building goes directly into the kiddie portion of the park, which I think is totally unacceptable. The thing about permissible non-conformance, I think is a real issue. This should not be granted based on that. There is nothing permissible about it in my mind. And I hope the board would really reconsider. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening.
My name is Eddie Lennon. I commute down Main Street every day and I totally understand what these other folks are going through having, living right there in the vicinity. In terms of traffic, pulling into the spot, backing out onto Main Street, you know, however many times a day, like a lot of them said, it looks good on paper. You know, maybe there's going to be one an hour, maybe there's going to be 10 an hour. You don't really know until it happens. And then how does, how does the town enforce it? In terms of the traffic, is there a way to do like a traffic study to see exactly how it's going to affect? Is there a way to do an environmental study to see exactly how the ventilation system is going to work or is not going to work? Is there a way to do any kind of sound studies to figure out whether or not you're actually going to be able to hear the dogs, excuse me, in the basement or whether they're in the training floor or whether they're outside? The safety concerns, you know, that, that comes into effect, especially next to the playground, the daycare, like they said already. It sounds great on paper. I think, I'm, I'm a small business owner. I, I, you know, appreciate the fact that you want to open a business. I think that there are probably better locations in Tocco if this is the town that they want to open it in.
You mentioned that you are a commuter down Main Street. Do you work in Tocco? Do you live in Tocco?
I commute to the train.
You commute to the train, okay. Thank you.
And, you know, in the morning, if it's a, I think they said it's a 12-hour daycare program. Most people for 12 hours are probably dropping the dog off sometime in the morning, you know, 7 o'clock, 8 o'clock.
It's a two to three week is their standard. They don't drop them off each day.
I've actually looked on their website and I've actually called the corporate office and spoken to the person that answers the phone over there. They offer something called Day School, which is basically like a glorified dog daycare where you can drop your dog off in the morning and it can stay for the day and then you can pick it up at night.
Well, just to, just because we can answer that for you now, we will be limiting their application based on discussions still yet to be ongoing regarding, they're only going to be allowed to do that twice a week and it's 10 dogs and that's it. That's, so it's twice a week for 10 dogs. It's not every day. And that will be limited.
Only two days a week, you're saying that they're going to have Day School?
Yes, and that will be on their application and it will be limited to that if it gets, if it got approved. It's not a hard thing yet, the 10, but that's, that will be limited on the application.
Yeah, I mean, if you want to succeed in business, you would want to keep the place as full as possible, obviously.
No, the, the application, as we are dealing with it, assumes that the majority, the vast majority of their clients are there for a two to three week period and are not entering and leaving the facility on a daily basis. Because we share your concerns, I think we share everybody's concerns. All of us, I think, drive down Main Street, know what a nightmare it is on Main Street right now. And we share those concerns. I think a lot of the points that have been raised, and I'm sorry, I don't mean to cut you off, you can return to your comments, but a lot of the points here, I think, are, are points that need more examination, especially the air quality issue and some of the other items that have been noted. I would like to clarify a couple of things, one of which is that this is a business. It will be a business. You know, let's say we turn down the application, another business, which you might prefer a different business in that location would come in and would use that parking as well. And so, you would have the same parking issue that you might have with any other business. As far as we can tell, and again, this is based on their application, there is not expected to be more than one to two cars at a time on the property. And there's ample room for cars not to have to back out. They can actually turn, you know, plenty of room to turn and exit the facility frontwards. But it is definitely something we're keeping an eye on and we share that exact same concern. But I think many of these points have been very excellent. Sorry, you may continue.
I, I'm finished. I just wanted to finish up by saying, I think that, again, it sounds great on paper and, and until you actually get up and running, you know, you won't really know what's going to happen. And then at that point, it's going to be too late.
Yep.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And one quick point of clarity on the barking. We raised this issue, I don't know if any of you, I'm assuming most of you may have watched the last meeting. That was one of our primary concerns as well. It is, you know, if this did receive approval, it's a legal issue and it would quickly become financially untenable if they had barking dogs in the facility. Because essentially, and Gary can correct me if I'm, I'm wrong here, but essentially complaints would not go to our billing department. This would actually be something for the police. And the police would write fines for the, can you, is any of this incorrect, Gary?
So, yeah, what would happen is our code says that if, if a dog barks continuously for more than 15 minutes, a violation could be issued to the homeowner or business or whatever it is. So, normally, generally, what would happen, because we have these, we have these in the village, the police will be called if there's a complaint, police will go down. And actually, time, listen, and if they can hear dog barking for 15 minutes, then that homeowner, it's usually the homeowner, will be issued a violation. And they're brought into court and there's usually a fine associated with that.
What's the standard fine usually?
It's, uh.
I'm not going to hold you anything, but.
I believe it's $2.50.
So, if you've got one of those every day, per occurrence, that would become financially untenable.
And, and there's this, there's a way this board can also say, listen, if, if this is a continuous problem, they can, they, there's a way we can craft it. So, if there's more than, say, three or four convictions during a certain period of time, say, a year.
Yep.
Then the special permit would be revoked. So, if this is a continuous problem, instead of just dragging them to court every day, we could also say the, the permit could be revoked.
Okay.
So, there, the village does have safeguards with the noise also. And that was addressed with the applicant. I did address that with the applicant, that, that code section. I know we talked about it last time, so that's another thing we can think about.
Okay, thank you, Gary.
Are there any further comments from the public?
Is that a couple more? Few more comments. Number one, I, I think the board itself is making too many assumptions. You're assuming that what's proposed right now is adequate. You're assuming that the law that's in place is adequate. It seems to me that it's a real misjustice if you're putting the lives, the safety of our children and residents at risk just to, at a, at a company like this, to the neighborhood. I think it's important for you to reconsider because that facility, that building is contiguous to that playground. And inherently, there will be issues. There will be barking issues. The ventilation is one problem, but you said the windows are located in that basement. So, you aren't going to stop dogs from barking. That's a fact. And in fact, the ventilation goes indirectly into that kiddie playground and, into that kiddie portion of the playground. And I think that's extremely important. Again, the safety of our children and residents are more important than having a new business in that facility. At least that type of business. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other further comments from the public? Maybe, yeah, Mr. Brandis, if you can come up and a couple of comments, that'd be great.
A couple of comments. In terms of the parking, as you mentioned, as Mr. Jackman had mentioned, we are not pulling off, our employees are not parking there. When PTI was there, it would get jammed with people and they would be backing out. I actually worked with them several times, so I know we did different facilities, worked with them. They also had over 30 employees there at many times, at much of the time that I was there, along with milling machines and vacuum machines and heavy-duty compressors. And there was no noise complaints because that building is built to contain the noise. And that's why there was never complaints from that space itself before that.
PTI was manufacturing?
They manufactured equipment, yes.
And they were venting, they were also venting through those same vents?
Well, our ventilation system, as I said, is, we're not sending out smelly air. We're venting, this is just air circulating that does get fresh air brought into the building.
No, I'm just clarifying, it was an existing factory.
Yes, it was an existing factory.
Okay.
And it was, had a lot of people that had, and certainly had a lot more parking problems than before. We, as I said, we have four employees right now that we're working right now. We may end up having six at some point in the heavy peak areas. But once again, now also Marble Dell Road has now have long-term parking meters have been installed on that area, which is right around the corner. We are not taking vicious dogs into this facility at all. We do train vicious dogs, but only at their own homes. So, this is not, we're not bringing vicious dogs. And they're not in the community themselves, except on a one-on-one time with a trainer, which has a double leash and a muzzle on the dog, if there is any sort of facility. Because they are concerned, because they have their liabilities as well. So, they're not going to have vicious dogs where they're training other dogs that can get injured because they will be responsible for those dogs that get injured. So, we're not bringing vicious dogs into this area. We do train them, but only at their own homes. We do not bring vicious dogs here.
Can you talk about the architecture of the building and the idea of putting 68 kennels in and what, what, I'm sure you're not a dog kennel expert. So, what, what, what did you look into when you were deciding what could be put in?
Well, we have, there are certain conditions that, that the company itself has. And that is that the dogs cannot, have to have lots of air and ventilation around them, that they cannot be squeezed in together. They have to have at least 10 feet around the dog entrance, entrances. And that's how we developed. So, the dogs themselves have, or the kennels are in the middle here and they're wrapping around over here through the facilities. So, they have lots of room over here. They're not squeezed in, they're not packing them tight to each other. They have plenty of room in terms of the kennels. These are standard kennel sizes. I'm sure the owners can tell you more about the kennels themselves. We've also added areas so they can wash the floors over here. We added on the second floor over here, a cleaning area so the dogs can get washed before they go back. If they've been, if they've been there for a week, they get doggy smelly, so they do wash the dogs. They're not letting dogs smelling bad when they're there and also when they go home. But once again, the training is all done inside the facility. 99% of the training is done in there. So, we're not taking the dogs outside into the public to where people can get injured. We're not having vicious dogs. We're having dogs that will come and behave improperly. That you have a, somebody come into the house and they start jumping on people, that is a, that's one of the behavioral problems.
Please address us, thank you.
Okay, that they are dealing with people that have dogs that have bad behaviors, that chew furniture, that, you know, pee on the floor in the house. Those are the type of things that people mostly get complaints about, that they're not good neighbors with other dogs. So, they have to be with dogs, they know not to be barking at dogs all the time when a dog passes by. Those are the type of things that they're training and that's done inside the facility. It's only occasionally that they do have dogs that do have this problems with other, you know, social dog issues between each other. And they will take them, once again, one-on-one at a time. Maximum will be three out at the time at the facility because they have to be with a trainer. One dog per trainer. And these are, you know, advanced trainers. These are not just people just walking around that they picked up on the street.
Great, could you talk about fire suppression? There was mention about firefighter department, fire safety.
Well, we do have two means of egress in the basement area. So, for the dogs, there is a stair at each end over here and there's also a stair that goes out to the facility in the park area. So, there's three ways for the dogs to get out for the firemen, to come in and, and get the dogs out or to release the dogs quickly if there is a fire.
You have a sprinkler system, I assume, or?
No, there's no sprinkler system in this facility.
At the very least, Leonard, I would be interested to find out more about the ventilation system. I do somewhat share the concern.
Do you have specs with you on that?
That can be provided to us between now and next meeting, but I would like to know what's going on with the air before, they're correct, it goes directly onto a children's playground.
Well, no, the, no, if you notice, the filtration system is actually over here.
Oh, you said it gets pumped to the east of the building.
These are the windows over here and we will have some fans that'll blow, bring fresh air into the space as we need it. But the ventilation system is actually over here where it filters the air through charcoal filter systems.
So, where is the air exiting the building is the important part?
It's not necessarily exiting. We have an air conditioning system that's in part of the building.
Well, it's got to go.
So, there are return systems.
But if you're bringing air in, it's got to go out somewhere.
Well, it'll go out, I guess, well, whenever this air being brought in, it goes out, but it's going to go out. But with, it's, once again, this is filtered air. We're filtering the air inside.
No, I understand that, but the air has to come out.
Yes.
You're an architect.
Well, it would be going, well, it would be coming out on this.
So, it is coming, okay.
But it's not, we're not talking about any sort of poisonous air. We're not talking about smoke or machine air or anything like that. This is not.
We understand. We just need, we need, I think, more information about what's going on.
The filter system is actually here because it's mostly going to be closed in. It's only, and it's like the summertime, we want to bring some fresh air and things like that.
We hear you. I just think I'd like to hear what system you're using.
It's listed here on the drawing and we can get you more specifications of that.
Thank you. Yes.
We're still open for the public hearing. If other people would like to come up, please come up. Thank you, yes.
In your consideration for, under variance from Village zoning code, I urge you to, to consider the fact that I believe that you have a fiduciary responsibility to the citizens of this community to do what is best based on their opinion. Right? Therefore, I don't think you should grant this under the permissible non-conformance policy.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I was under the impression that there were sprinklers. Isn't that something that should be considered, considering the fact that if a fire starts in the middle of the night, one person that's there overnight is going to get 68 dogs out to safety?
It's certainly something to be considered. I, we'd have to look at the, the building code and we'll ask our building inspector what the, what the requirements are. Thank you. So, we are, we are being told by our building inspector, Bill Williams, that sprinklers are not required for animal daycare centers by the building code. Are there, are there any other public comments at this point? So, at this point, I'm going to make a motion to close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. So, thank you, Village of Tocco, for your comments on this application. We are not going to be voting on it today. We have 60 days to render, to make a decision. So, we will consider the comments. We will certainly ask for additional information as required. And then we may vote at the next meeting or it may be the meeting afterwards, you know, depending on the information we receive. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. So, at this point, let's take, let's take a three-minute break and come back at 8:45 and we'll begin on 21 Columbus. So at this point, let's take, uh, let's take a three-minute break and come back at, uh, eight forty-five and we'll begin on twenty-one Columbus Avenue. Thank you. Village of Tocco, welcome back to the, uh, January eighth, twenty-twenty, um, zoning board of appeals meeting. Uh, we had a good first, uh, um, part of the meeting and we are now going to our last agenda item, which is twenty-one Columbus Avenue, the Epstein Building. Um, asking for a special use permit for a new daycare center. Is the applicant here?
You're here.
Great. Um, give it, give us an overview of your, uh, of your project and what may have changed since the last time you were here.
Sure, I'm happy to do so. I'm Adam Wexstein from the law firm of Pacerman Tortorellan. Wexstein, the attorney for the applicant. Here with me are Andrew Villari from Stonefield and Matthew Jarmell, who is the project, uh, architect and project manager. So we'll each play our little piece. As you know, we were here back in October, um, for the special permit for the daycare center, which is in the, the Epstein's building. This is a, you have a strange code in that because this is a use that is a special permit use, which also does not have parking requirements that are explicitly set forth in the code. We come to your board to, to get a determination, among other things, if parking is adequate. And then we go to the planning board, which has to determine the appropriate number of parking spaces. So the planning board process really can't go any further than it has gone until we get your decision on the special permit. Not the only issue, but one of the issues. Since we were here, we have been working on the parking issue. This is one of those situations where we have now been before the planning board six times and it wasn't the only issue, but parking was a key issue. Traffic was another issue that was considered. The, our professional's opinion has been that the parking that's there accommodates the demand for our use. The on-street parking, the board's consultant has reached the same conclusion. The issue that has really arisen here, as is evident from the memo you've received from the planning board chair, is the possibility that the employees of the center will, because of having to pay for the spaces, because of the income level, will avoid using the parking meters and park on residential streets. So what we've come out of that process with at this point is for the demand for fourteen employee spaces. One space will be located on this, onsite. The client will buy five spaces, permit spaces, perhaps to increase at some point, and will subsidize in accordance with at least the general recommendation of the planning board, with some of the details to be determined, presumably if we get back there to go ahead with the site plan process, to make it more affordable and to avoid the economic imperatives of not using those spaces. So as to parking, the other thing that has happened is the parking was reconfigured to some extent. Our, your traffic consultant came up with a plan, which resulted in part from what our traffic consultant had come up with. Part of that reconfiguration, it's already happened, our traffic expert can go into it more. It leads to the plan and the way of addressing parking was reviewed also by your administrator and your police chief. So this is an issue we believe has been adequately addressed at this point. And in fact, we would suggest conclusively addressed. There's also, as to the second issue, that the expert opinions at this point have really shown that there's no significant impact from our proposed operations on pedestrian traffic, regular traffic, or in fact, the intersection, which isn't obviously not a great condition at present of Columbus and Main Street. The, our traffic expert has said there, that the impact will be negligible on that intersection. Your traffic expert has said there are no significant impacts on traffic resulting from this. So we feel the record is pretty clear. Uh, our client, our client's representative will talk about some of the measures we're putting in to address the issues. But without further ado, let me present Andrew, who's more informed about the traffic issue and the parking issues. And I will ultimately, with your leave, once they're done, come back up and talk about the law a little bit, which is, what I hope I know about.
Thank you. For the record, my name is Andrew Valeri. It's Villas and Victor, I-L-L-A-R-I, uh, from the firm Stonefield Engineering. I'm the traffic engineer on behalf of the applicant. Uh, I testified in front of, uh, the zoning board when we were in front of you the last time for the same application. So, um, not to belabor any of the previous testimony that I presented, I think that, uh, the, the record speaks for itself. But to summarize how we've made it this far, we've been working on the project for a long time. As, as Mr. Wexstein mentioned, we've been in front of the, the planning board for six times. Uh, this is the second time we're in front of the zoning board. Uh, so we've done a comprehensive amount of analyses. We've done a, a robust study of traffic and parking for this development. Uh, and what's important to keep in mind is that we weren't operating in a vacuum where we were doing, um, these analysis assumptions and, and working based on the only things that we thought the, the case was. We've gone back and forth a number of times with the village's consultant, George Jockmark from BFJ Planning. I'm very grateful for the time that the board, uh, the, the planning board and the board's consultants have spent on this application, so thank you. But the, the key thing is that we've provided, um, a number of studies and a number of studies have conclusions that indicate that there's enough parking to support this application and that the traffic impact is negligible. And the key thing to keep in mind is that the village's engineer and with special, uh, special focus on traffic and parking has agreed with those findings. So just to be abundantly clear, we prepared a traffic study and for the benefit of the record, it's dated June, uh, eighteenth, two thousand nineteen. It was last revised in August sixteenth of two thousand nineteen. We looked at the, um, excuse me, that was regarding the parking utilization study. That was the title of that report. So we looked at how much tra, how much parking a facility of this site would generate, both in terms of parents and, uh, employees of this facility. And we looked at where they're going to park. The parents need short-term parking, the employees need long-term parking, how many of each type are going to be here and at what times of day? That's all baked into that analysis and we found that there would be enough parking to support it. Uh, the village's consultant, BFJ, uh, wrote a letter entitled, "Review of Parking Impact Studed." That was dated August thirtieth, two thousand nineteen. Uh, the key thing to keep in mind is that, um, BFJ's letter concluded that the drop-off and pickup maneuvers can be accommodated without significant disruption and double parking along Columbus Avenue and that the analysis contained within the parking study were discussed and reviewed directly with BFJ.
Sorry, just to maybe save us a little time so we all get to bed a little earlier tonight, but, um, with, with Chairman Scousers' permission here. Uh, we talked about this, you know, ad nauseam, I think, at the last meeting, as far as the parking goes. And I believe, you know, as we discussed in the work session, we do feel that you guys have done enough to mitigate the parking issues. And I think, and I don't speak for everyone, but I speak at least for myself, that it feels that, um, we're in a comfortable place with the parking. Accepting, as, as we noted, your discussion of subsidizing, I think that was one of our key points from last meeting, was subsidizing your employees so that they are not encouraged due to financial, uh, limitations to park elsewhere. Did you happen as follow, the only thing I can think of as far as parking that was kind of still an answer from our perspective was the item raised regarding the fact that you have, um, you know, let's say, a hundred and twenty parents. I think it was, uh, from my memory, a hundred and twenty parents, something like that. Was the expected average drop-off, something around there?
You're looking for the exact number.
No, is it around there, it's like a hundred and twenty, a hundred and thirty parents? Some percentage of those will stay in our village and commute. Uh, did you give any thought or follow-up on that discussion that we had?
Yes, we did to answer your question. So we've worked on a, a number of these studies in areas like Tocco, in areas elsewhere. And what we found is, and also the, the operator can attest to this as well, is that, um, people use these centers if they're closer to home. There is, I think the conversation, correct me if I'm wrong, was, what is the percent chance that someone from outside Tocco comes here, drops their child off and then uses the train station from Tocco?
Yes.
That's the, the line of questioning, correct?
Correct.
So we thought about that a lot as well, you know, in, in the time this, between the last two hearings. Um, and the key thing is that these centers service the areas directly around them. What further test, a, a further testament to that is if you look at the, um, the letter that, um, the Andrews Center put together, it actually speaks to where their parents are coming from. Now, before I get into the, the link here, there are definitely differences in Andrews' operation and TLE's operation. Um, we have, uh, an expert in the field of, of childcare, Mr. Match Armel, he can explain a little bit more in depth, but it's not exactly apples to apples, it's a little bit apples to oranges.
Well, what's your estimate of the percentage of your parents that are going to be coming from outside Tocco, quite simply?
Well, what I, it's the majority and that is what bears out in the Andrews letter.
Are from outside?
Oh, from outside, oh, a very small, uh, percentage.
Do you, you don't have a rough, I'm not going to hold you to it, but do you have a rough percentage?
It would be, uh, I'll, I'll put it this way. So there is, um, in the Andrews letter that was prepared by their staff.
As you know, the Andrews is a different model from you. You have expectations based on your prior centers. As you've told us at length, you have extensive data based on your multiple other centers. In your centers, what is a percentage of attendees that are from outside the immediate vicinity?
Outside the immediate vicinity and then is the issue that they're from outside the immediate vicinity? Or is the issue that they're from outside the vicinity and then they'd use the train?
Well, I'm just trying to give us some framework here. So someone who lives in Tocco and commutes and goes to your daycare, I don't care, they're already in Tocco. So what percentage of your population usually, for your centers, comes from outside the area? Outside a five-minute area, let's say.
Yeah, outside of a five-minute area?
Yes.
For the record, I'm Matthew Jarmell, I'm, I'm the applicant's architect. Um, and I've been engaged with the learning experience for about sixteen years as their preferred architect. I've designed about two-hundred-and-fifty centers for them across the country. Uh, so I'm, I'm, and actually my office in Livingston, New Jersey is attached to one of them, actually the very first one. So I'm intimately familiar with, with their operations. And, um, to answer your question, it, it depends a little bit. And it depends on sort of the makeup of the community that the center is located in. I think we've provided prior testimony that we find that parents either use a center that's real close to home or real close to work. So when we find a, a community, um, like Tocco Village, where there's more residential than there is business, we find that mo, most of the, uh, parents that are utilizing the facility live in the, in the general facility. I don't have an exact scientific number, but I would say that eighty-five to ninety percent of the children that are being in this facility are going to come from a one-to-two-mile, you know, area around, and most likely the village.
Well, see, that's the issue. So one-to-two-mile area in this area is another commuter line. So one-to-two miles is, um, you know, instead of going to the New Rochelle train station, now you're going to go to Tocco. Cause you live in New Rochelle and, I don't know, you, you prefer the TLE experience, let's say. It's just kind of for the sake of argument. I, I think, and I'm a little bit, um, and you can clarify for me here, our representative from BFJ. I'm a little bit annoyed, it feels like no numbers were attached to that. Um, I thought that was a major issue that went unnoticed in the, and it's not directed towards yourself, it's actually directed towards your planner, who went on and on about the statistics that you had for multiple centers. And I'm kind of shocked that nobody can tell me how many of a hundred and twenty parents might actually get on the train in Tocco. If the answer's zero or five, I don't buy that. I just don't.
In terms of how many people are going to come specially to your community?
Well, I will give you an example, myself. I lived in Boston, I had no children. Um, I lived in Jamaica Plain in Boston and I used to take a nice orange line straight from my house, right into downtown to work. Uh, I had a kid, I found a similar, it's almost an ident, a sibling company to yours, I would say. Commuted in Brookline and guess what? That was arrived by another train stops. So guess what I did every morning? I drove my car over, parked, got my kid into the daycare and took my train from Brookline. And that way, I had a little few extra twenty, twenty more minutes of my day that I could work instead of commuting. That way I could get right back to my kid, boom, home. So granted, it's me. However, it's been a long time since I was an actuary, however, I can tell you as an actuary, the number is not insignificant. It's out of a hundred and twenty parents, it's not going to be one or two. You're going to have a few people that are going to say, TLE's a really high-quality, really nice daycare and I can drop my kid off and pop right on the train and get right downtown. And I'm, it's not necessarily that I think this is going to be a massive impact. I'm more annoyed the fact that it's not been addressed either by our planner, and I'm annoyed by that. I'm also annoyed that it doesn't seem to be able to be given any numbers or any sort of idea of the framework. Could, could it be eighty? Could it be five?
I, I think, I think that, and I just, I smiled when you said you were an actuary and my daughter's studying to be an actuary. It's just, I was, for whatever that's worth, unrelated, but, um, the, you know, I, I said about ten to fifteen percent. So if you think about, our center, um, is going to have a lot, and I'm not going to necessarily go into the numbers in too detail, but I can. Our center has a licensed capacity of a hundred and seventy-four. Within that is a room that's an indoor playground that gets licensed for the children that are in the facility.
Before you go down, you said based on the fifteen percent. Again, let's go back to that. I, I'm belaboring the point here, but my point is it's not being, it says that it's eighty-five percent of your population within a one-or-two-mile area. Two miles is New Rochelle. It's a separate train line. One-to-two miles in this is not local. Local is a quarter mile. I know it's crazy, but I'm just giving you this, that's kind of how it works around here. There's, the, the communities are crammed and close together. And again, this could be a negligible impact or it could be a big impact, but it's not being addressed by anyone.
Well, my, my professional opinion and my experience is it's going to be very negligible.
Okay.
Because, and, and the reason for that is you're not a business hub, you're a, you're a residential community. So if you, you know, if you found, um, you know, we find, as I was saying, is that, that you either use the center close to home or close to work. And the close to work isn't here, because there's no, although there are, there are jobs in the community, we believe that most of your community is commuting possibly to the city.
I would imply that close to work means close to the train line.
Close to the train line.
Yeah.
It could.
I, I, I will stop belaboring the point at this, at this juncture, but I, I am just expressing my annoyance that this issue has not been addressed, both internally and externally. Thank you.
Can I?
Yes, sir.
Address it, yeah. I mean, I remember when you discussed it last time and I did think about it and this, I did talk to other people about it, um, who also live in the community. And we don't have any, I mean, nobody can come up with a specific percentage or number on it. But the, the only thing I can say is that, um, your personal case, you know, I understand it. I know that happens. At the same time, we need to know, remember, they are, this is not the only childcare center. There are a lot of childcare centers in the area. There are childcare centers in New Rochelle, there's one in Crestwood. So that, you know, there's not going to be a significant number of people that would do that. We call it induced demand. It's basically a type of induced demand because now there's a new attraction here, a new childcare facility. It's not the first one, we have Andrews.
But that's being fairly dismissive. Let me clarify with you. TLE is tailored specifically, very specifically, I think this gentleman would admit so, to high-end professionals. This is a very high-cost daycare solution. You're talking about a very specific segment of the population that more likely than most average population, they're not heading down to Starbucks to, to pick up their day job. These are people going to the city for the most part.
Yeah, they are. And, and I'm sure there are similar childcare facilities in other communities, so that they're not all going to, you know, be wanting to come to Tocco. The other point is, it's not that easy to get a parking space here. So you have to, you know, if you, if you do think of people, commuters that commute to the city, uh, that today maybe use a train in New Rochelle, uh, they're going to come and, and bring the kid here. I'm not saying it will not happen, but it's definitely not going to be a significant impact. That's my professional.
That's your professional opinion.
Yeah.
Cause your, your point, your point is taken that there's no parking, but that's exactly my concern, is that, guess what? There's no parking. So guess where they're going to park? They're going to park up the hill or going to park in front of people's homes.
Yeah, but it's, it's not that easy to do that, to walk this distance and so on. It's, it's, you know, uh.
Okay.
Induced demand happens when everything works out very well and is easy to do.
The point is taken.
Traffic, in terms of parking and so on.
Yeah, the, the point is we have no firm numbers on this and your, your professional opinion is, is that there's no way for us to come up with a firm number, unexpected number of.
I don't know.
New commuters.
I don't know of a methodology, you know, to do that. I think one piece of information would be from Andrews to know how many people come from outside the community at Andrews. In that sense, it may be, although, you know, it is a different type of facility, but that may be a helpful indication. And then the question is how many of those are actually rail commuters? They're not all rail commuters, you know, so it's a complicated question.
Well, I think your point, uh, is, uh, is true, is, is if the long-term parking is full now, you can't have any more demand. It's full.
So they'll park in the residential neighborhood?
Potentially, you know. But that's. But that's, you know?
Again, I, I'm not saying it will not happen, but it's, in my opinion, it's not going to be a significant number.
Okay, thank you.
And just to remind you too, we have two train stations too. So when someone just parks right in the middle, oh, I'll go to this one or I could go to that one, to either one. I mentioned that one once before too.
Yeah, and you do have, you know, 12-hour parking spaces that would allow that, you know, that happens to some degree, but it's not, that's not the preferred parking for most commuters.
So, um, one thing we wanted to talk about was traffic, of course, um, and continuing on traffic. And we want to talk about, uh, especially traffic during high demand and, um, when, uh, the anticipated high demand of pickup and drop-off would be and how that compares to the overall congestion of the area. Uh, obviously it's something that, uh, it's talked about at previous, uh, zoning board with other applications, so if you could address that, I'd appreciate it.
That's a very good question, Mr. Chairman. So that, that is exactly what we looked at in our traffic study. Um, and for the, the benefit of the record, it's dated August 16th, 2019. It's been submitted, um, to the village previously. It's been reviewed by BFJ. BFJ has wrote a, a review letter of it that is dated, uh, September 3rd, 2019. Uh, so we, we looked at exactly that. We looked at when is it busy in Tocco, specifically the intersection of Columbus and Main Street. Everyone knows it. Um, and then also looked at how much more traffic would be generated by this facility during that same time when, when it's busiest. And, uh, previous time we talked about this application was TLE's, uh, it's, it's an academy of early education, but it's not necessarily a school where there's a arrival and dismissal time. You know, at a school, bell rings at 8:15, everyone's arriving between 8:00 and 8:15. You have this huge spike in traffic. That's not what you have at, at TLE. Uh, it's a rolling drop-off and pickup where you see drop-off happen over extended period of time and pickup happening at an extended period of time, uh, where you have more of a dispersed effect rather than a centralized, everyone's arriving in the same 15-minute period. So, uh, we worked with BFJ, as I mentioned, um, and the intersection, everyone's very familiar with it. Um, it's not great the way it is today. However, this project's impact on it would be negligible and that's.
Let me, let me stop you there. Did you review the memo by BFJ planning on September 3rd?
That's correct. Yes, I have.
And they said, uh, these trips, which again, I believe their numbers are conservative, but that's fine, or not conservative enough, that's fine. These increase, increases on the page represent four and a half percent of the 2021 traffic volumes through the intersection. So we're talking about a four and a half percent impact on that. In your mind, four and a half percent is negligible?
Yes, and, and.
That's a large percentage to be negligible.
The, the BFJ letter even goes further in the conclusion and it indicates that the traffic impacts of the proposed TLE center at 21 Columbus Avenue are negligible and not noticeable by the users. The real impacts are expected to be lower than the projected, than projected in the Stonefield Study, since not all TLE trips will be, since not all TLE vehicle trips will be new trips added to the local network. And what that point is, is the macroscopic impact of this project is that it's designed to serve the residents of Tocco. These sites are well-suited for parents with children in so far of a radius of where they're located. There's people that live in Tocco or live in areas around Tocco that have children that are driving through the network today. In the future, should this project be developed, they may still be in the area commuting to work and instead divert slightly to where this site's located. It's, it's called a diverted trip. Um, it's not necessarily more traffic added, so that's why we come to the conclusion that there's not a huge, uh, change in the traffic's, uh, conditions at the intersection. I also understand there's a, um, a study going on, uh, from, I believe, the village and the county looking at the intersection. I think we'd be more than happy to, uh, work with whoever's conducting that study to provide them the data that we have or any potential, um, suggestions.
So Mr. Valari, you, um, mentioned that you'd done a traffic study at the, um, at the intersection of, uh, Columbus and Main last time. And I believe you, did you say the average wait time was 52 seconds?
I visit BFJ.
Could you talk, did you do that study or did BFJ do that?
We did, we did the study and then they concurred or corroborated the.
And what, when, when did you do that study and what was the findings?
So the, the date of the study is, um, August 16th, 2019. We did, maybe another date that you're looking for is when we did our traffic counts.
Okay.
So we did our traffic counts. We did our traffic counts on Tuesday, June 25th, uh, 2019 and Wednesday, June 26th, 2019. We did counts on two days, uh, that was at the request of the planning board. Uh, we looked at the two days, uh, both days, schools were open. It was towards the end of the, the school year, but schools were open. Uh, we compared both of the days of traffic counts. They're very similar, so we didn't feel that there's any need to seasonally adjust. Um, and then, um, to answer your question about what the average wait time is, um, number 50-something, um, I think you, what you might be referring to is the, um, intersection overall level of service. So the intersection overall level of service, yes, is, uh, in the 50 seconds, uh, category. Um, we talked about the last hearing that that's what's called a level of service D for a signalized intersection.
Yeah, and, um, I, I, I'm, um, paraphrasing what I have written down and, uh, correct me if I'm wrong, but, um, the wait time is, um, categorized from A to F, I believe, and A means very, very light traffic, F means high congestion.
Right.
You know, whatever. And, uh, to be a D level, it starts at 35 seconds. And to be at an E level, it's 55 seconds and we're already north of 50 seconds on average. So.
In the existing condition.
In the existing condition, so, um, you know, one of our concerns here is that Tocco is at a breaking point, you know, because we are right at the, you know, kind of tipping point essentially from going from D, which is not great, to E, which is even worse. And, um, I think our concern here is that even a small or what could be considered a small increase in the number of, uh, trips, you know, four and a half percent or, you know, scaled down even potentially to three and a half or whatever, you know, will flip it from being D category to E category. And actually, it won't be just a 3% increase in time. It will be a much greater increase in time because it'll just increase congestion immensely.
Could we revisit with BFJ for one second? At the last meeting, just to confirm, how many seconds is the current wait? I believe it, I can't find it, the number on your. The current wait that you started with.
Current, um, average wait in the morning peak hours is 50 to 2 seconds.
And you told us E, E is 55, correct?
And then the future, what's called future no build, which takes into consideration background growth, that increases in the afternoon, uh, because we exceed 55, that's level of service E.
So that, um.
Background growth and then you add it, uh, the traffic on this project, it still is E. It goes from 56 seconds to 57 seconds. So the impact of this.
The methodology that's used is in the range of one to two-second additional delay. And I mean, I, I understand what you're saying. We are at this breaking point.
Right.
But the reason we're at the breaking point is not so much because we have so many vehicles, although I'm sure when you, uh, people that are here, they'll think that there's a lot of traffic. It's mostly because you have a very, very inefficient traffic signal. You have a traffic signal with an exclusive pedestrian phase. So you have a very constrained amount of green time that's given to the cars and that's why you have this level of service D or E. If you were to replace, and I've seen similar conditions in other towns where you have this exclusive pedestrian phase. In addition, the signals are all coordinated, uh, which, you know, increases the inefficiency of the signal that you have. If you were to change the exclusive pedestrian phase to, as an example, to what we call a leading pedestrian interval, which the city of New York has been doing at many intersections where the pedestrians get a five or six seconds advance walk and then the traffic gets a green light. So the pedestrians are in the sidewalk by the car that they, by the time the cars get the green light, uh, that would have tremendous positive impact on the intersection.
We, we agree.
So you are, you, um, it has been discussed that the village of Tocco is doing a traffic study and a light study. Are you familiar with that and are you involved?
No, it's the first time I hear about this.
Gary, can you talk about?
I don't know if the village is doing it or the county.
The village is doing it.
Whether it's a village project, a county project, do you know what's, uh, happening?
I've been involved in it, Mr. Chair, so I, I just don't know, uh, the entity handling it. Um, I know there is being one done. Um, I speak to the village administrator. That's basically all I know about that.
Mr. Jack Martin, your, um, uh, experience, how much does it cost to do a traffic study at a light like Columbus, uh, like Main and, and Columbus? What is the cost of that and how long does it usually take a municipality to do that study, decide on the action and actually execute the action, uh, to improve it in your kind of guesstimate and experience?
Well, in this case, it's complicated because several intersections are interconnected. So that makes it much more complicated and, and to come up with a signal timing phase and so on, uh, I would say, you know, $20,000 to $30,000, you know, would be needed to do that study and to recommend, you know, improved signal system, upgrading it, you know, there's, uh, and, and there's also questions, for instance, uh, the signal today is in a fixed phase system. Now we have signals that have video detection where when, uh, there are no cars arriving, then the, the, the signal phase changes automatically.
Well, can we, we're, we're going down this rabbit hole about a study that isn't even done yet. And the problem here is that we're not making this approval or disapproval based on that study, which may or may not be going on because apparently no one can confirm that. This study has to be decided based on what's there right now. We can't assume the village is going to fix that traffic intersection, correct? Your, your analysis is not taking that in consideration. Your analysis is based on the current conditions continuing.
But the analysis, I think, is correct in the sense that the, you know, we're talking about a 4.5% increase in traffic and the, the analysis based on the, this phasing arrangement that you have, you know, and there are moments where you have long queues. I sat there today for half an hour, uh, 5 o'clock to 5:30.
Was that one light or two lights to take, to get to go through a half hour?
Occasionally, there, there are not many phases. And what's important also is that, you know, most people, they see it and when they sit in the queue and they perceive the light, they perceive the, the wait as being very long. We know from experience, from measurements, that if you, and the average person sitting at the queue and the delay is 50 seconds, let's say, they will say, oh, my delay was five minutes. And that's how people perceive the.
Let me, let me clarify. I don't think that because my delay is five minutes. I think that because I'm sitting out front of Orange Theory at 7:30 in the morning in stop traffic. That's why. It's not five minutes. I think dismissing the fact that, I, you know, I think if you pulled this board, your average Tocco resident is in, I think, very large disagreement with your study. Your average resident does not like the town traffic right now. I can't tell you the number of people that use the cutarounds going up and around. And sorry, this has nothing to do with you guys. I've just, it is frustrating to me, very frustrating to me, that this is called negligible or this is called minimal impact from our very own consultant, when you yourself admitted to member scousel last meeting that this takes us into E, which by your own definition is kind of catastrophic traffic.
Level of service E is generally an undesirable condition. That's true.
So why is the impact negligible?
The point is, it is, it is close to E today and the background growth that's happening every year, the one or 2% increase brings it to E. It will be E independently of this project. And this project has a, you know, 4.5% increase, but it's that the phasing arrangement that's the major issue. The other point I can say, you know, we, we do a lot of these studies and then we go out on measure, we, we have gone out with timing and so on. And so I understand people that are in the car, you should, I recommend that you go and stand there and watch it. I, like the way I sat today, yes, there's a moment you have a very long queue and then two seconds, no, two, maybe, you know, 20 seconds later, the queue disappears completely. Uh, and I have seen today green phases that were not completely utilized. So the, the problem that this intersection is not the typical congestion where you have huge volumes of traffic. It's a terrible, inefficient traffic light.
I agree with you completely. The point is that there was a, there was a light study done when, and Gary can correct me if I'm here, when Quarry Place was built and people were concerned about the traffic from Quarry Place. There was a light study done when the hotel was built and people, and nothing happened. And so we can't assume the village is going to somehow magically fix what is a horrible intersection.
Yeah, I, we don't make that assumption. All I'm trying to do is to explain what the problem is and also explain why the increases in delays caused by this project is in the range of one to two seconds on average for all the cars. And that's the, the average increased delays for all the cars entering this intersection during the peak hours is in the range of one to two seconds per.
And I, and I'm not necessarily, if I'm being blunt, I'm annoyed about the fact that this, through my most scousels questioning, seemed to expose an issue where we are entering E, which I understand you said that's through natural growth. The fact that this wasn't raised as this could create issues, it's just, I, it seems I have yet to see a project that you guys don't like and that won't cause traffic issues. It's, it, they're all seem to be fine.
We, you know, my job is to be as objective as I can about traffic. I've worked 40 years in the traffic. I've gone, these measurements, I've done these projections, I've gone back and measured the traffic afterwards. So I understand what's happening and I also understand your point of view. The point of view, you know, if somebody is sitting in the car and, in the queue and, and waiting for the turn, the light to turn green, but you don't necessarily see the approaches that don't have the long queue at the same time. So, you know, the, in this case, the, the vehicles that would go, if, if this were to be approved, the vehicles that go to the TLE, they come from the north, they come from the south, they can from, they can come from underhill. So they don't necessarily all go through the intersection at the same moment. They find their way to get to the TLE that's the least congested. And so that's how cars behave and the, the basic result is that, yes, there will be an impact, but it's not going to be, you know, a, a substantial change in delays, uh, compared to what you see today.
Quite simply, it's not going to get better. It's not going to be the same. It's going to get a little, little bit worse.
Yeah, it's going to be worse by one to two, for all the cars entering through there, all the cars on average will suffer by one to two seconds of increased delays.
I understand. My last question, and I'm sorry, I'll end after this, member scousel, is that, um, was your study based on including already the impact of the hotel?
They did the study, they did the analysis and it's my understanding, yes, the hotel traffic. That explains the, what we call the future no build scenario. So they, they look at existing conditions, 2019. They looked at the 2021 no builds, which then includes the hotel traffic. And then they add their traffic to do the 2021 build condition.
Thank you.
I got one question. Is the hotel officially open yet?
Oh, no.
Not yet?
It is not, no. And I just want to clarify, there is a traffic study being performed by the village. I don't know the entity doing that traffic study for that light. I don't know what the results are because it's not complete. And even if it's complete, I don't know, you know, if the village board's going to implement whatever is suggested.
And I'm going to throw someone under the bus here. To let you know how seriously the village takes, how awful the traffic here and the massive impact it's having on our daily life in this village, that light wasn't even included in the study until we raised it at the zoning board last month. They were doing this, they were doing the study on other lights. That's how unseriously they're taking this intersection. So I have no faith that this is going to be fixed. All right, I'm done.
The hotel study did look at this intersection, came to similar conclusions and I think the village asked them to provide, to agree to a pro rider share to the future improvement of the intersection. I don't know if you remember that, but they, that's what I remember from that study, I don't know if you remember that, but that's what I remember from that study, that there was an agreement that they would pay a percentage, their pro rata share to, for any kind of improvement.
I don't recall. I don't recall that. I don't, I just don't recall that being, don't remember that being part of the site plan approval, because that's where it would have been.
Yeah. So to review, Mr. Valari, as far as traffic, I know we talked a lot about, but you, based in your study, you're estimating that during peak AM and PM times, the learning experience would add about 80 trips per hour during the peak time, and that would increase traffic somewhere in the neighborhood of around four and a half percent volumes. And that would add, you know, one to two seconds on average to the main street light. Is that correct?
Only correction being the number 80. We find the number to be more about 50. That's on table two in the report.
In the September 3rd BFJ memo, we had 39 vehicle trips inbound and 33 outbound for, well, that's 72 in the morning and then 81 in the
So that, that number is referring to the total amount of, of people that are going to be coming and going to the site?
Yep.
And what's baked into our analysis is not everyone that goes to this facility could be via vehicle. Tuckahoe is a very unique place. It's a, it's a great place to live. That's why you have a lot of activity here. There's other options for you if you don't want to use a personal vehicle. So there's a possibility that you don't have that.
Thank you.
But, but yes, to conclude, the impact of this project, and I, I just want to take a second to wholeheartedly agree with a lot of the testimony that, that Mr. Jacomart's mentioned. The intersection's operation today and what's going to be in the future, that's something that's completely separate from this application. So what the impact of this application is on that intersection is imperceptible. It's about a 1%, it's about one second per vehicle increased delay, number 4% being how much traffic could be added to that intersection. Why it's only a 1% change is that it's added to different approaches, where you have 4% overall, but maybe it's 1% eastbound, 1% westbound, 2% southbound. So you have this very minimal change at the intersection, and undoubtedly, it could operate differently, it could operate more efficiently, but this project's impact on it is imperceptible.
Thank you. Mr. Wexley?
Sure, I'm back. Before I speak, I don't know if you want Mr. Jarmel to answer any questions regarding operations. These are things we certainly went, went over in the past. Well, I guess what we've talked about brings to light what I wanted to talk about a little bit, the law. And it's not specific to the issue you raised, but as the board is aware, in general and in the context of special permits, the law is pretty clear that, for example, community observations unsupported by empirical data aren't a basis for denial, particularly where they're contradicted by expert testimony. And here, as to all of this, they're contradicted not only by our expert, but by your expert. And for example, I can, I can cite multiple cases, but just off the top, there's a case out of Oyster Bay from the intermediate appellate court with jurisdiction over Westchester, among other places, where there was a denial of a special permit, and the proof on which the board acted was testimonial local residents and a town board, an affidavit from a town board member that the parking spaces were constantly filled in the area, that trucks exiting and entering the establishment would pose dangers to children, and that the streets were frequently congested, all contradicted by the expert testimony. The appellate court said, you're wrong. It's arbitrary and capricious to make that decision where the expert has studied it and come to a conclusion. I can take you through the facts of about five more cases, all similar facts, all, all the same result. Beyond that, when you go into the area of a special permit, there's another layer to it. Because it's something that is generally considered to be a permitted use, in order to deny a special permit, there has to be, generally, there are exceptions, but generally, there has to be proof in the record that the impact of the special permit use at that location is greater than would be the impacts of the uses that are permitted by right. So for example, you have a site here that could be used without a special permit, as a theater, as a church, as a retail establishment, and it wouldn't necessarily be in Epstein's, which is relatively dormant at the moment, as a restaurant. I can go on. There are a lot of uses that may not be that intense, but there are a lot that could be. You're not writing on a blank slate here. You're not saying, we, we feel that one second is, is unacceptable. And I really do think what you're looking at is the impact of our use. Because at the end of the day, unless you're willing to say, that site has to remain vacant because the intersection is bad. And I don't think that's something this board or any other board would want to say. This just isn't that much of an impact on parking, on traffic in general, or on the intersection in particular.
Thank you very much. At this time, at our last meeting, we had kept the public hearing open, so we will reopen it right now. If there are any members of the public who would like to address the applicant at 21 Columbus Avenue as a special use permit for a new daycare center, if you could state your name and address, I'd appreciate it.
Oh, I'm actually an attorney.
Great.
My name's Adriana Kirzenbaum. I am with the firm of Dorf and Nelson, and our firm represents Andrus.
Great.
Am I speaking too loud? I don't want to. Okay, this is my first time before the zoning board of appeals in the village of Tuckahoe.
Welcome.
Thank you.
And what is Andrus? Could you explain what Andrus is?
Andrus is a not-for-profit daycare center with over 50 years of experience working in the community at different sites. And the empirical evidence we intend to provide today is an expert that has not been presented by the applicant, namely, someone with experience in operating a daycare center. They are very quick to say that we should accept all their findings because they're based on experts. However, they haven't provided a person with the knowledge of how to operate a daycare center. And just like they say that an operator of a daycare center can't be a traffic engineer or can't be an architect, then likewise, an architect or a traffic engineer can't know how to operate a daycare center. So I, first of all, want to dispute council's law, reference to the law, and refer to a case by the appellate division, Second Department, decided on August 27th, 2014, Arthur Smiles versus Board of Trustees of the Village of Maniola, which I believe is exactly on point because in that case, the village decided to deny a special use permit for a daycare center that was looking to operate in a vacant, in a vacant commercial spot, just like this one. And at that time, the court noted that when you have empirical evidence, it's not community opposition, and that the board can take those facts into consideration in reaching a denial of the special use permit. And the appellate division will not overturn that denial because that denial is not arbitrary and capricious. So against that backdrop, I would like to present, as our expert, Frances, who will discuss about how to operate a daycare center, excuse me. And I also want to bring a couple matters to your attention. First of all, the traffic study that is being relied upon, it was done when school wasn't in session. So it's very seasonal. And we also believe that the estimates as to how much staff that they need to hire is very conservative, that it is not accurate, because based on the laws of New York State, they are not going to be able to accomplish what they intend to accomplish with the proposed staff. So that will impact the parking situation. Second of all, there, we already have an issue with the staff in the Andrus and the parking in the streets. And because of the traffic situation as it stands right now, if the application is approved as it's presented, as proposed right now, there's going to be a dangerous traffic situation. There's going to be an over-intensification of the land use with respect to available parking. And most importantly, it's going to be a hazard with respect to the provision of emergency services, because we're talking about a lot of kids. And, and you're going to have to have a lot of different requirements in terms of having fire drills and where would these kids go. So I would like to now have our expert come and address this board with your permission.
Yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So my name is Frances Clayton. I'm the Director of Operations and Initiatives for Andrus Early Learning Center, which has been operating in this building on the first and third floor for about 10 years now and in the neighborhood for about 50, just over 50 years. So I have some notes here, but given the time of night and the discussion that has already happened, I'm going to try to abbreviate and hit the high points. And will, please interrupt me and ask a question if something I'm saying is not making sense. I think that Bill provided you just with some charts before the evening, if you would like to look at one so you know what I'm addressing. I apologize, we didn't have printers for the large displays. So the first, the two things I want to address are, the first is going to be the estimates for the number of staff that are going to be required to operate this center based on New York State licensing requirements. The number TLE has continued to use is 29, and I'm going to explain to you why that number is bafflingly low based on our experience operating a center here in the state and, and a licensed center. The second thing I want to talk about is, in a number of different settings, we have heard about five locations that have been used to develop the plan for the Tuckahoe location, how they have used these sites to think about traffic and parking and all of the things they've talked about thus far. And I want to highlight some of the primary differences in those sites in Tuckahoe that I think it's important to pay attention to. I was also going to address a letter that you received from Stonefield on their behalf that indicated six concerns about their perception of our data, concerns they had. I'm going to table most of those for now, and if you have questions about them, I'm happy to answer them. The one I am not going to table and that I'm going to start with is that we continually hear that we are somehow a different program or run a different operation than TLE will be running. I do not see differences, any significant differences. Tuition is approximately the same, the geographic draw is approximately the same, the hours are approximately the same. They indicate in the letter to you our ratio difference as a primary concern. That is because the rate, the numbers they're using for staffing, in my opinion, are impossible in order to operate a center this large. So that's where we're going to start. So I'm going to use two terms that I have created to sort of help explain this. There are two numbers I'm going to reference. One is operating staff and the second is actual staff. So if you will look at the first page of this packet, in the top table, you see sort of a blue section that says New York ratios, New York operating staff requirements, right? The far left column has age groups. So the way New York State and other states set ratio requirements for staffing are based on age. So for children under 18 months, for every four children, you have to have a staff member. So the minute you hit a fifth child, it requires a second staff member. You can follow from there for the age ranges proposed from TLE, that ranges from one to four, for the youngest children to one to nine for the oldest children. In several planning work sessions, TLE has used the ratio of one to six as a way that they estimate this 29, right? So the operating number is the number at any given moment, the number of staff you need onsite to meet licensing requirements, okay? The actual number is the number of staff you're going to need to meet those operating numbers for a 12-hour period, five days a week. So if you look at the second page to illuminate this, and I'll show you this and then I'll answer any questions you have. This is an example of a staffing schedule for an infant classroom. So the first two, where it says full-time staff, one or two, in theory, to operate this classroom, you would need two staff. That is the operating staff number. However, in order to meet that requirement, our staffing schedule uses two full-time and two part-time staff. So four staff, actual staff, are required to meet the operating staff requirement of two. Does that make sense?
So that certainly makes sense from a, from a number of people you would have to hire.
Yes.
So I, I do understand that. If I'm looking at your chart correctly, though, it looks like for the majority of the time, you would only have two people on staff in the building and in fact
In that classroom, yes.
In that classroom and from, you know, 10:30 to 2:30. So for four hours during the middle of the day, you'd have three people, right?
Only two in the classroom.
But two in the classroom, but three people. Because I think where we go with this and why the number of employees is important is to talk about parking.
Yes.
And that's really where we're getting at. So even if they have four people hired, you know, for the majority of the time, there's only two people in the building.
Right.
Is that correct? Except for the middle of the day where it looks like there would have to be three people onsite.
Yes. So I will definitely address the parking in some very specific ways. So, so what you can see is that the number TLE is using for a capacity of 178 children is the operating staff ratio. So they are using the 29 number, not the actual staff needed to run a 12-hour center five days a week. Okay? From that, they have said that 14, they will need parking for 14 people. Mr. Board Member, to, to address your concerns earlier about where you can get actual numbers, we have them. We provided them to the planning board. We can tell you of our 100 parents, we had an 88% return rate on a parent survey. I'm happy to provide you with those results. And we have outlined how many parents arrive and leave by car, how many parents arrive by car, go to work by train, come back by train and leave by car. If I remember correctly, and I will get you the actual statistics, but it is about 10% of our parents who come to the center and buy a car and then take the train, come back to the center by train and then leave in a car. Again, don't quote me on that, but I do have the, the actuals that I'll be happy to provide for you, the same thing we provided for the planning.
That's, that's good enough. Thank you.
So, okay, so we're, we're back to the staffing number. So if they say our operating staff requirement is 29, our staff, between 66 and 68% of our staff drive to the center. That is the next, that is the, the second chart of tables on page four. These are three different times this study was done. They have questions about it. I'm happy to address the specifics, but that's between 64 and 69% of our staff arrive at the center. So that means that if they have 29 staff, if that is all they need, they will require four, they will require 19 parking spaces. So for only their operating staff, they're going to require 19 parking spaces. We currently need 20 or fewer staff members is our operating staff capacity, just to give you an idea. Our actual staff number is currently at 35. So there is a dramatic difference between the actual staff and the operating staff needed. Our major concern, and I'm going to sum up a lot of what I had written here, is that all of the numbers given to talk about parking, to talk about traffic, are based on the operating staff number and not what they will need in practice. And so as wonderful as all the traffic studies may be, when they're based on that number of staff needed, they're incredibly low.
So what ages does Andrus serve of child?
Andrus serves children six weeks through pre-K.
Okay, so very similar age group.
Yes.
And what's your total enrollment at the Tuckahoe location right now?
Our capacity is 128. Our total enrollment is 100 at the moment. We build through the year. So this is a, interesting thing to explain, is that you have to start at lower capacity so your toddlers have room to age up into the preschool and your infants have room to age up into the toddler program.
So you, you mentioned
So you begin in the fall at your lowest capacity and you build through the year.
And you mentioned your operating staff is 20 and your working staff is 35. In comparison to your graph here, is that 35 onsite or is that 35 people total?
That's 35 people we have employed.
Okay, so there, we, that may not be the number actually onsite at any time, as Member Scousa pointed out. It's only during those kind of crossover periods.
Exactly.
Okay.
One thing I, one thing I will point out is, if I recall correctly from the planning study, one of the thing that's been talked about is one staff comes in and another staff and leaves and another staff comes in, right? So in theory, that sounds great. I'll leave, take my parking space, I'll take your parking space when you leave. In reality, you cannot do that. Someone has to be at the center with the kids, another staff member park their car, come into the center, make the appropriate exchanges, recover the brakes, and then leave. And so the, in the traffic studies, if I'm recalling correctly, the time there was the least amount of available parking in this area in Tuckahoe was the middle of the day. TLE made an argument that our traffic impact is going to be at the beginning of the day and the end of the day with pickup and drop off. That is correct. What they didn't point out is they will need most parking spots for staff in the middle of the day, which is exactly when they're unavailable.
I got a question for you. Do you do special events too, like birthday parties and stuff like that?
Sometimes, not often, but sometimes.
No?
Yes.
Hmm.
Um, I'm just skipping through a little bit. So the other thing I wanted to address is the difference in the TLE, the five TLE locations that they have cited as using to help plan for this location. There are two major differences. One is proximity to public transportation, the other is licensing regulations. The first difference, three of the centers they have mentioned, Cedar Grove, Parsippany and Union, are located within walking distance of a bus stop and require multiple transfers to get to Grand Central, which TLE, you know, has pointed out, as with our population, many of our parents are of our parents are to working professionals in the city, which is why the train and the location are so appealing. The other two centers, Ramsey and Massapequa, do have a train station in walking distance, but they're 18 to 20 minutes away. So Tuckahoe, our location, is approximately a two-minute walk to a train station, which gets you to Grand Central with zero transfers. This is to your point earlier, Mr. Jackman. The five minutes, I understand, and I understand how in most communities, it may be that families are taking their children to daycare centers five minutes from their home or five minutes from their workplace. Here, it is definitely five minutes from transportation, which gets them to their workplace. I can tell you on a number of accounts, I had a call, I was laughing with the village yesterday, I have a woman who has been waiting for three months. She's been offered a spot twice and had to decline because she didn't have parking. The permit came through, she took the parking, she called me, her children are now coming to our center. She is coming from outside of Tuckahoe, she is parking her car in a parking spot here, she is riding the train, and she is coming back. And that is, depending on what you consider negligible, it is a larger number than I think the estimates have been given to you so far. The second difference is the, was there a question? No. The second difference is the requirements in ratios, and I just refer you back to that very first sheet in your packet. One of the primary differences in New York and New Jersey, most of the centers they've used to compare in New Jersey, are that New York requires more staff, more staff than New Jersey requires. For one, the ratios are simply higher. You can have fewer kids per staff member. The second is the primary difference, it is the sleeping hours down at the bottom. In the state of New Jersey, you can meet ratios if the staff member is somewhere in the building where they could be called, if there was an emergency. In the state of New York, that does not count. So if I'm on my lunch break in the state of New York, even if I'm having my lunch in the staff lounge, I do not count as coverage. In the state of New Jersey, I do. And so that means, that is again in the middle-of-the-day staffing that I feel like has been unaccounted for until now. Are there any sort of specific questions about that? And if not, I just, the last point I want to make is that in the letter from Stonefield, I believe, to this board and the Planning Board where they address their concerns with Andrus, the last point they make is one that I want to highlight and I will not argue with. They say more than half of our staff, by our own account, that drive to work, park in unrestricted, or in metered, un-metered areas in residential sections, and this is undesirable to the village. That is correct, and I find it interesting that they chose to highlight this. When given the option of free parking versus paid parking, most people are going to choose to search for the free parking. I don't expect this will change much if parking is subsidized because they still have to TLE has proposed a subsidized parking. They say they'll write a policy that requires their staff to use the subsidized parking. I think that is wonderful. I can tell you from experience, I can tell my staff all day, you need to pay the meter, but unless I am willing to go wander around the neighborhood and have license plates of all of my staff members, there is no way to enforce or police that. So I can't imagine how it is possible to prevent them from parking in free areas as opposed to paid parking. So in summary, I think the staff estimates used by TLE as a basis for all of these analyses they talk about are bafflingly low. I think as a result of that, the estimated numbers of parking that are needed are incredibly low. The estimated numbers of how staff are going to arrive to work are low, and I have statistics, again, TLE would like for you to believe they're biased. I think sometimes people wish I would present more biased data. I am happy to walk through the process with anyone who's interested, show you the survey, show you the results, show you the data we're presenting. It is simple questions, simple answers, and giving back simple numbers.
To be fair to them, I mean, one point I want to, your family's geographic breakdown, you know, it does support that a large proportion of your population is from a very immediate area.
Yes.
You know, so in their defense, you know, that does seem accurate, that you are serving a very, between East Chester, Tuckahoe, Bronxville, and you could argue Yonkers, you know, parts of Yonkers.
Absolutely. I think we are serving a very local area. East, depending on where in East Chester, depending on where in Tuckahoe, and Bronxville are not a five-minute walk to the center. Those people are still coming in cars and taking trains. So I think the data does show that we serve a local community. That's our goal, to serve the people in the community where the business is. What the data also shows is that those people are not walking to and from the center. They are coming in by either public transportation or leaving by public transportation, and they're bringing cars into the area.
I'd like to actually see the survey.
Sure.
Can you get it to us before the next meeting?
Absolutely. I can send it to you tomorrow.
Thank you.
Could you talk about the flow of the day and when you see staff coming, when you see families coming and leaving, and what your typical daily schedule is like?
Sure. And I'm pulling this up, and again, I will be happy to send all of this again at some point. What we showed in the survey that we did of families, what I can pull from our data on TAD polls, is that most of our families, 40% of our families on this particular day, picked up between 5:30 and 6 o'clock. And that drop-off, 45% of our families dropped off between 7:30 and 8:00 with another 30% between 8:00 and 8:30.
So 75% of your families are between 7:30 and 8:30 a.m.?
And again, this was a particular day picked before the last Planning Board meeting, and we have this data, and I'm happy to run it for any timeframe the board would like to see.
I would like to point-
Do you collect that data on a daily basis?
We have a system, an electronic system parents sign in and out on called TAD polls, and it clocks when a child arrived and when the parent picked them up and left.
I would like to point out for, you know, in defense of our planner, is that that does roughly reflect what we're showing for peak hour inbound and outbound on this memo. If she's saying, you know, 80% of your 100 students are dropped off and 40, 50% of those are driving, or maybe more, that is roughly kind of the 40 to 50 people we're showing coming in.
Just to, I mean, I hope that that is proof that I'm simply gathering data and sharing it. I'm not looking to only provide data that refutes their points. I think a lot of it lines up, and when this came up in the Planning Committee and TLE would say Andrus' data is biased, they would say, well, hold on just a second, be careful because it also corroborates a lot of what you're saying. And so again, I'm happy to share.
Well, it's very useful, thank you. It's been very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Oh, can I address one more thing really quickly?
Of course you can, yes.
The other thing that TLE will probably mention makes us different from their center is that we have a special education program. We have an inclusion program that pushes into two of our classrooms. It's a total of 10 kids. It is for half of the day. They all leave by 2:00. If anything, it means we require less staff because from 2:00 till 6:00, that is a number of our kids that we're assured are not there, and so we're not having to staff. And so the differences there are unbelievably negligible, and again, I'll walk anyone through the specifics that would like to see them. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Is there anyone else from the public who would like to address the board? Please come up. You can certainly add some more stuff.
We'll make it like ten.
We're here all night, come on.
Anyway, my name is Al Cower, and I have business across the street at Center. And my, our property is right next door to the Epstein property. And I've noticed, you know what, one thing that hasn't, you have to forgive me because I'll keep forgetting things, but one of the things that wasn't mentioned tonight was how long it takes the kids to get, to let them off and go. Last time at one of the meetings, it was set, took five minutes to take a child, you know, across the street, take them in, and get them booked. That'd be five minutes per car.
My memory is bad, but I thought they said 15. Was it 15?
No, it's five minutes.
It was five, really? Wow.
Five minutes. But if they have a sibling, then that becomes eight or nine minutes, because they have to go back and forth. Now, my biggest complaint, well, I have, probably not my biggest, but one of the complaints I have right now is getting these kids across the street. You have to, if they park across the street, incidentally, and those parking spaces, since they've been put up, those meters, they've been filled in the morning. I have a few times I've been down here before, you know, the commuters have found the spaces, so they're using them. So that's been a good thing, but that doesn't let it, you know, those spaces are used. So you can't count on those spaces. So now we've got these children coming out. Now, we have a fire department right here. We have a police station right here. We have a community center over there. We have the library over there. This is before you get into the village, and you have, of course, you have Roma's that comes in later. He's not there in the morning, but Tuckahoe Paying Glass has their main people come from 7:00 to about 10:00. Those are the main contractors. Same time the children are coming. These contractors are coming in, they're picking up their merchandise, and they're leaving, and they want to get out in a hurry, just as, you know, as the parents want to get their kids off, and so they can get to work. So this is a mishmash. Should we have a problem where there's a fire and the engines have to get out and the police department has to get out? We've got two childcare centers right next to each other. I mean, it's, we're looking for problems that just shouldn't be. Last time I was here, I mentioned the fact about how parents, you know, have problems on their hands or they're thinking about a lot of stuff, and I mentioned the fact that, you know, they left kids in a car, set of twins got killed a couple of months ago, mother a couple of weeks ago left a kid and she couldn't find her child, she forgot that she left it at the daycare center. These things go on and on and on. There are probably stories that these people could tell about what parents have done, you know, and a whole bunch of them, and it keeps us laughing or crying, or whatever the case might be. This is a problem. This is not the area for this. It's way too much. And I mentioned before, Epstein's a very good friend of mine, you know, Milton would be very upset for me talking like this, but this is not the place for it. You cannot risk children's lives. Traffic is going to get more difficult, traffic is going to get more difficult, and there are other things going to happen, you know, down the line. Traffic, you know, this gentleman mentioned about the traffic light. Well, I'm sure that his experience is going to make the thing better, but that there's no guarantee. Even if we ever got it, if the county said we're going to put this light in or straighten it up, there's no guarantee it's going to get better. It's just that he hopes that it would be, and his expertise says it will be. And for the moment, that's all I have to say. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you very much. Are there other comments from the public?
Yes. We wanted to mention that in addition to staff there are other aspects to operating a daycare center which could potentially increase traffic going to the center.
Sure. So what she's asking me to address is a smaller point we had, but I went past, is that there are the staff and there are the families and there are the kids. There are also, at times, a number of other people that come to and from the center. I don't know what the plan is at TLE for food. We have a cook who cooks food at our center. That is a milk delivery truck on a several-days-a-week basis. It is a food delivery truck at least once a week. There are office supplies that come in. Children who are not classified as part of a special education classroom, but almost any daycare center, has children who receive early intervention services through the state. We have, I think, about six or seven at the moment who have therapists come in between one and three times a week for 45-minute sessions, and so that is additional parking coming there as well. And the other thing that was in that section that I passed over is just a question, and it is honestly a question about fire drills. As traffic has increased, whenever we have a fire drill, which we're required to have once a month, which is where all of the children and all of the staff leave the building, the police station, the police has, have decided to block off Underhill because the closest place to us is the Underhill lot across the street. So once a month, they shut down Underhill for 10 or 15 minutes. We cross the street, and it was a simple question about how that will work at a center that has Columbus as its cross-street instead. I think, yes, okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments from the public? Would the applicant like to make a few comments, closing comments here?
I should have had coffee instead of tea.
So for the record, again, Matthew Jaromel, I would just like to make a few comments. So it sounds like there are some similarities and certainly differences between the two programs. The differences that I think are noteworthy to point out is we do not cater to any special needs population, which means that there are, and typically, special needs means more staff, not less. I don't know how the New York ratio works for special needs, but there will be no special needs children, there's no early intervention services provided in the center. Kind of the difference between-
Just to clarify, you don't, I think most centers, I believe most centers offer the early intervention to actually come into a student that's at your center.
I'm not aware of the learning experience doing that. And, you know, it's, because it creates additional liability to have people that aren't licensed on staff and part of the organization. So in, you know, in terms of being an expert in childcare, do I operate a childcare center? No. I've designed over 300 for probably half a dozen major brands that all operate very similarly to the learning experience in brands you may have heard of like Kitty Academy, Goddard, Children's America, Lightbridge, Primrose, for example. My firm is, I won't say I've been the exclusive, but I've probably done 90% of the learning experiences over the last 16 years. I've been in the centers while they operate. I sit in corporate headquarter meetings on a regular basis with the operating staff, and we adjust. And when it comes to ratios, and some of the comments that were made are right on. You have a ratio of one to four, and all of a sudden you have five kids, you have to hire another staff member. We are very precise when we lay out these buildings, down to the inch, to make sure that we don't fall out of ratio or have an extra child in the room that requires an extra staff person, for example. When we talked about one to six, we were looking at the ratio of the overall center, not on individual rooms. Our drawings that were submitted as exhibits include a licensing chart, and that licensing chart is per New York state law, based on each age group. So I think we were in agreement that our ratios are correct. The difference was is our competitor indicates that they need more staff to fill a spot, and I think that's rotation-wise. This is a for-profit organization, has over 250 centers in operation, about 30,000 kids a day are taken care of. They've got this down to a science, and I assure you, they're not going to, unfortunately, they will not hire one extra person that they don't need per ratios. So I think that argument's a little weak for us. As far as the New Jersey versus New York, she's 100% right, but at the same time, if I design this building under New Jersey ratio, I'd have more kids in it. So by, you know, typically, this is a unique project in that we're renovating existing building as opposed to building new. Typically, we build these standalone if there's raw land. You live in Westchester County, there's no raw land or very little. So in New Jersey, if I design a 10,000-square-foot building, I have licensed capacity of about 170 children. If I design that same 10,000-square-foot building in New York, I've got capacity of about 155 children. So where she's correct about the ratios, if we could apply those New Jersey ratios, we'd have more children. So when we utilize New Jersey centers for operating on a square-footage basis, they have more kids than a New York center. So just keep that in mind. One of the things that we've provided testimony on before both the Planning Board and this board is these centers operate at about 85% capacity. Our competitor pointed out that she starts the year at 100, and she's got a capacity of 128. Take 100 divided by 128, that's 78% capacity. And I agree with that. You can't fill a center to 100% because you need to have room within the center to rotate children as they age. One of the things that didn't come out of our traffic testimony, though, is typically, well, I'm going to come back to that. So our center has licensed capacity for 174 children per our plans, per New York regulations. So our center has licensed capacity for 174 children, per our plans, per New York regulations. One of the rooms in our center is licensed, and it's an indoor playroom. That room, we call it Make-Believe Boulevard. It's licensed for 24 children. Those 24 children are already in the building. So, you know, you have to license it because you're using it, but you don't necessarily put additional children into it. So if you deduct that, that's 150 people, it also reduces by three staff, so the 29 becomes 26. If you take the 150, and you take eighty-five percent of that, so that you have the room to rotate children and move them around, you got about 128 children. That would be an ideal occupancy for this building. As far as the drop-off pickup, we find that in a suburban center where you're dropping off, parking and walking your child in where there's parking, it's about five to seven minutes. The testimony that was provided in the report says less than 10. So it doesn't say fifteen, or somewhere in the middle. We don't have a cook. We have a pantry in the facility. There are food deliveries probably, probably once a week. They don't actually cook. They buy prepared meals that they warm up in microwaves, and they have snacks as well. That's essentially my, I guess we'll call it rebuttal to the comments that were made. I thank you for your time, and be pleased to address any question.
Are you building any other centers currently that are on commuter lines?
Yes. So you mentioned New Rochelle. There's actually a center that just opened about six months ago that's operating in the Trump Tower in New Rochelle. We have a center under construction in White Plains. I'm not sure you consider commuter line, but we have a center under construction in Briar Cliff Manor as well, in Westchester. You know, there's, as I mentioned, about 250, 260 centers operating. Some of them are, some of them are in New York City, right? So there are subways, bus stops, and rail. Some of them are in towns like Hoboken, which are on commuter lines. Some of them are in Bergen County, New Jersey, which get, are on New Jersey Transit. There's a center under, about to break ground in South Orange, New Jersey. That's very, I don't know if you know South Orange, very similar.
No, it's fine. I just was interested that all your new locations located in Westchester seem to be being built near commuter lines. I wasn't sure if it was a strategy, or-
So I mentioned earlier, maybe in the work session, I'm also a real estate developer. So the three centers I mentioned, and, well, the two under construction, Briar Cliff and White Plains, I'm a principal of, and the Tuckahoe, those are the three in White Plains. My strategy is White Plains. And one of the things you'll notice about, I'm sorry, is Westchester County. One of the things you'll notice about Westchester County is there are not a lot of national brand childcare centers here. And I think the reason for that is that Westchester County, being so close to New York City, it's mature, it's built, it's, it's really not tremendous room for new development, but it's redevelopment or repositioning of existing buildings that we're doing here. So most national brands rather build a new building. Two of the centers that we're doing, hopefully we're doing this project if it's approved, is a renovation. The White Plains project is a renovation. The Briar Cliff, we tore down a building to make way for a new building, because it was just a little bit more cost-effective in that sense. The building that was there wasn't, didn't have value. So my strategy is, yes, I want to be in an area that's candidly affluent, high population, highly educated population, where both parents are working, and it's a successful formula for childcare.
You've kind of just made my point, though, about people commuting, using your school. Both parents affluent, both working in the city.
Well, and that's, and hopefully living there-
That's your target population. So your strategy is to build near commuter lines, where you're going to target this specific community, who are going to use these communities to, for their childcare needs, and then commute to the city. Okay. Anyway.
So, thank you.
Very much. Are there any more comments from the public at this time? If you could please come to the podium, I'd appreciate it. Thank you.
Actually, before I get into the other thing, what I don't understand is why you picked Tuckahoe. I mean, you-
Please, Mr. Cower, please address the board, please, and speak into the microphone.
These gentlemen, these gentlemen are sophisticated people. They got 250 places that you say that you built and so forth. Now you come to Village of Tuckahoe, which is a great community, there's no question about it. You can go to Marbledale Road, there are buildings over there to build. You don't have to worry about kids, other competition. This is right. This is footsteps away from Grand Central, or from the train station. But, you know, you guys are spending a lot of money to come up here and say that, "We're going to build, the traffic is not great, but we can do it. We're going to have these lights on the sidewalk, and have these crosswalks made, and we're going to put these kids at risk to do this, but, and we're going to buy parking," and that's another story. "We're going to buy parking," and, you know, normally a place that's what, seven or eight thousand square feet? Epstein's, they probably need, you know, 20, 30 spaces. You're going to buy parking five or six or seven spaces, that I heard about, maybe a few more. That's not going to do it, and if I, you know, it really starts me thinking. I've got about 20 spaces across the street. Maybe I ought to just do the same thing. I'll buy five or six spaces and rent the rest of the stuff away. It just doesn't make sense to me. I know I'm getting on a tangent. It doesn't make sense for me that you guys are that sophisticated, that you come to Tuckahoe and say, "We can do it here. It'll work." It doesn't make sense to me, but there are a lot of things that don't make sense to me. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Are there any further comments from the public?
Just one more thing, as I understand the importance of going on the record.
Very important.
Given the number of centers operated and the access to the staffing models and schedules, TLE has done a number of traffic studies. They have some beautiful architectural drawings. It seems they should be able to supply this board, should they request it, with a staffing model that shows how it's possible to have 29 staff. And you can, we also have a community space that is licensed for a certain number of children, and we do not use it as a classroom. We use it as a common space. However, it is licensed for that number of children, and should we choose to stop using it as a common space, because it is licensed, we can fill with those additional children. And so in granting the, in granting this request, should you choose to do so, it seems that the case needs to be made for a full-capacity program, because it is something you have the option to do. And the other thing I think that would be sort of enlightening is, on this first page, in a planning board meeting, these numbers I've used, it say, "Proposed TLE numbers for age groups," or something they shared in a planning board work session. It is interesting to me that they have 52, or licensed for 52 children, 18 to 36 months, but only 14 for three to four years old. So I'm not sure what then happens to those other children as they age up into those full 14 spaces. So again, it should be fairly easy, given the experience and number of centers they have, to simply say, "Here's what our staffing schedule looks like. This is how you do it with 29 children, 29 staff members," and that number doesn't include a director, which by New York State is not allowed to be in a ratio. It doesn't include a receptionist to watch the cameras that are going to be monitoring the parent parking. So I, again, just want to reiterate that those numbers are, from my perspective, dramatically low.
Thank you. Are there any further comments from the public?
Few things. Obviously, you know this testimony is from a competitor. We think that if they're going to say they're an expert, Fisher had given you something of their qualifications. We think their conclusions, not talking about her knowledge of her own operations, but the conclusions to us to staff, really are meaningless unless you see the survey questions. Depending on how I frame the question-
They are giving us the survey questions.
Pardon?
They said, "They did tell us they're going to send us the survey. They're going to get it to us."
But you don't have it now, so the proof before you really isn't, in my view, no probative value, until you know what they've asked. I would say that comments that there shouldn't be a special permit use in this site for a daycare center, obviously you have the ability to look at the operation and see whether you think it's consistent with the criteria and the ordinance, but the village board has already made a decision that this is a use, assuming the impacts are acceptable, is appropriate for this site. That's not, and that's really what Mr. Cower had to say. I can cite a case to you called Pluto's Design, which found a special permit denial, which was based largely, of a veterinary hospital, which was based largely on the board's inspections and perceptions of other animal hospitals in the area, was arbitrary and capricious, because there was no showing that it was the same in terms of operations and the same in terms of construction. Second department case, again, controlling case. And I would ask at this point, I don't think anything we've heard tonight changes it. I would ask you to close the public hearing and approve the application.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
I think it would be premature to close the public hearing at this time, because the board has already requested information, some of which we have provided to the planning board, some of which we need to provide to you. And in terms of case law, I'm sure I can equally provide case law if I was directed by this board to do so, to show that this board can use its common sense judgment, and that we have provided an expert with empirical data, based on 50 years of experience, not only in this location, but at other areas in Tuckahoe where parking was not an issue.
Thank you very much. Any further comments? So at this point, I'm going to make a, notwithstanding what you just requested, I am going to make a motion to close the public hearing, however. This is, this issue has been before us for quite a while. I think it's appropriate to close the public hearing. We will then have, as we said in the previous applicant for the dog care center, we will have 60 days to consider the issue and vote on it, whether it's at this meeting or the following meeting, and we do encourage both applicants and the public to submit additional information for our review. So I will make a motion to close the public hearing. Is there a second?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. With that, the public hearing is closed for the application for 21 Columbus. I want to thank everyone for staying very late tonight. I appreciate it. I want to thank very much all the thoughtful comments, very helpful to us. And with that, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you very much.